Welcome, everybody, Boulder County -- Boulder City Council Study Session of July 9, 2019. Welcome back from break, everybody. As you can tell, it was a good break. Can't remember anything. And we have two issues tonight, and the first of which is dealing with climate change. So I guess I'm handing it over to Mr. Steve.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we're here to talk about climate change. And as many of you have probably noticed, there's a tremendous groundswell among the youth of our community and across the world, actually. And this community is blessed with some truly extraordinary young people. So with us tonight, and given the importance of this topic, we wanted to open this with a group by the name of Young Women's Voices for Climate. And to introduce that group is Beth Osnes.
Hello. My name is Beth Osnes. I'm a professor of Theater and Environmental Studies at the University of Colorado, and I've had the great pleasure of working for the last year with these young women who are Boulder City middle and high school students who are concerned with climate and have been meeting once a week to come and do these activities. As we look to expand our scope and our scale of our climate action, I also ask that we look to expand our methods for engagement and who we engage. So I hand you over to the capable hands of Young Women's Voices for Climate.
What's climate got to do, got to do with it? What's climate but a long-term view of weather? What's climate got to do, got to do with it? Conditions prevailing for over a long time.
Each of us have concerns on climate change in Boulder. Mine is educating children and young adults on how to recycle and what to recycle.
Also providing opportunities for people to discuss their concerns about the future and letting people know that being sustainably conscious doesn't have to be boring.
Making climate change solutions and engagement workshops accessible to the whole community.
Climate change education could be taught better so youth understand the problem and could have the solutions.
Girls' education and family planning go hand in hand. The program Jenna Sister educates girls whose sisters are teen mothers and need continued support.
And how the climate crisis affects people with disabilities.
In fall of last year, we performed at CU in front of upwards of 150 people for Maria Oyeja's lecture on youth and climate. Maria said that actively involving adolescents while they are still relatively young is important regarding climate-related issues since research reveals that pessimism about addressing climate change increases with age, particularly from early to late adolescence. We also sang our "What's Climate Got to Do With It?" song.
We also made these wonderful green dresses. We also made these wonderful green dresses, and I added a tree onto mine because my family owns a tree nursery, and I just really like trees.
Each of us shared our personal declarations. Mine was a poem of how even if adults are afraid of taking action, I am not. I know I can make a difference.
We worked with an organization called Drawdown that focused on the top 100 solutions for reversing climate change.
We took the top three solutions: refrigerants, wind turbines, and reducing food waste, and made interactive skits that we performed at both Rocky Mountain National Park and the CU Science Museum.
In both performances, it was incredibly inspiring to see the young audience that we performed to interact and join us in finding ways to reverse climate change. Our second skit, Wind Turbines, is -- we're going to do a song from that right now. And if you guys have any more questions, please refer to the pamphlets that we've handed out.
Five, six, seven, eight. Wind turbines are beautiful. They turn both day and night. Provide the world with good, clean energy that makes our homes so bright.
Once made, I don't pollute air, and power from me is free. You need power, and I make energy. Seems we're meant to be.
And I get it when I'm too close to your very backyard. The noise and decrease in property value can make our friendship hard. Everybody now! Wind turbines are beautiful in function and in form. Provide the world with good, clean energy that makes our homes so warm.
Maybe we should have staff do our council packets like that. Much more accessible.
I want to see how that's going to come out in the post-council memo.
Thank you very much for that. That was a treat.
And in front of all of you, there are some flyers about the work that they're doing and the group that they belong to. So I'd like to take a moment to introduce to my left Jonathan Cohen, our Senior Sustainability Policy Advisor, and Brett Kunkaren, our Senior Policy Advisor for Climate Sustainability and Resilience, and myself, I'm Steve Katnack, the Director of the Climate Initiatives Department. And I'd also like to recognize that about half of the Climate Initiatives Department is also here and is looking very forward to this conversation with council. As you all know, the Climate Initiatives Department was formed in November this past year. And prior to that, we had already begun discussions about the need to look at and update the city's climate commitment, which was adopted in 2016. As we began those conversations, what we realized was, in light of new science and in light of much of what had been happening, a new approach to developing strategy and the activities and the actions that we should be taking as we move into the future became apparent to us in the development of how we should go about doing that. So tonight, what we wanted to discuss with all of you is really more that process and get your thoughts on how we should be approaching the development of new strategies to address what we know is a more urgent crisis and how best to go about doing that, too. I would like, from that, to turn it over to Brett for his presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Again, my name is Brett Kunkaren. I'm the Senior Policy Advisor for Climate Resilience and Sustainability here for the city. It's my honor and my privilege to be here this evening representing so many people who are a part of this work, not only the remarkable colleagues we have in Climate Initiatives. There are many members of our other staff, Open Spaces here this evening, Transportation's here this evening. And really, we also represent many, many people in our community who have been working on this for many years, some of whom are sitting in the audience tonight as well. So I want to acknowledge that really this is the culmination and the continuation of all of that work. Just to review for those who can't perhaps see the screen, I'll just read the questions that we bring to council this evening. First, based on the current science and recent changes in context, should the city expand, accelerate, or identify new climate action goals? And if so, does council have specific recommendations for that? Second, does council want to consider a climate emergency resolution, as some in the community have called for? Third, does the council agree with the climate action focus areas that we'll discuss this evening? And are there any others, or are there particular ones that council believes we should prioritize? In addition to the list, and a part of what we will be discussing this evening is a strategy for moving -- is a process for developing a strategy moving forward. And so we have a list of organizations and stakeholders that we've started to reach out to, and we'd like to know if council has other suggestions about those kinds of organizations or others. Also, we're starting to work to develop specific and formal letters of intent and partnership agreements with these partners, and we are interested in any feedback that the council has on that. And finally, we want to see if the council has any further requests for analysis of impacts from either the state legislative changes that we'll be talking about or some of the other city current climate action strategies and tactics. So just to kind of recap very briefly what the ground we're going to cover together this evening, there are essentially three themes. The first is how the context of climate action has really changed quite significantly, just even in the last year, both in terms of what we're learning from the climate science and also some remarkable achievements in our own state legislature. Second, we want to review with you some insights we believe that we have learned from the work we've done over the past 15 or so years and how that should inform how we go forward based on these changes in context. And finally, to describe the process that we are proposing to work with our community and others to develop this updated climate strategy. So let's talk a little bit about this changed context. I want to just note from a personal level that I look back, and it was almost six years to the day that I was here for my first presentation to council about our climate action effort. Our 2012 climate action plan had just expired. We were starting to work on our next-generation climate action plan. And the thing I want to note about that time, just six years ago, is that we were still actively having a conversation, not just in our society, but even in our community, about whether climate change was happening and whether we were going to stop it. So much has changed in just this period of time. And that was completely affirmed and illustrated in the report that the UN Panel of Scientists, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, released in October of this past year. And there were a number of findings there that have sort of set into stark relief how significant climate change has become. First is that climate change is, in fact, not only happening, but it's accelerating. Second, we actually now know that instead of talking simply about how much emissions-reduction percentages we should be achieving, we literally should be thinking about this as a budget, that there's only so much more carbon that we can release if we want to stay within a threshold of safety for our planet, and that that threshold is probably something on the order of 10 or so years if we continue at our current rates. This report also noted that the thing we've been focusing on almost exclusively, emissions-reduction, is no longer going to be sufficient by itself to stabilize climate. We now have to also initiate recapturing the carbon that we've released at very large scales. And finally, that our communities must now prepare for climate change because it is not only happening, it will continue to happen and with greater intensity, even as we work now to stabilize that situation. The report that the panel released also did, in a way, affirm the approach that we developed and that you, as a council, adopted three years ago in 2016, the date of our last climate action plan, in which we set out essentially three broad areas of action: energy systems change, which, of course, we've been working on for many years; regenerating ecosystems, and now especially how we work with these ecosystems to recapture carbon through sequestration; and also how we change this consumption- and-waste-oriented economy into a more circular one. And that all of that, we said in 2016, had to be done from the context of how it addressed our community's well-being and equity issues. What we now know is that there is a fifth element. We have to also consider the resilience of our communities as we now face climate change. So in 2016, we adopted what we felt was a very ambitious, in fact, one of the most ambitious, climate-action plans and sets of goals in the world. We set a reduction target of 80% mission reduction by 2050, that for our own organization, we set a goal of 80% by 2030. We set a goal of achieving 100% renewable electricity by 2030, 100 megawatts of local generation by 2030, and to continue the remarkable work that our community has done around diversion of waste into 2025. Yet despite those very ambitious goals that we set and that a number of other communities have set as well, what we now know is that it's insufficient. And I do want to note that unfortunately, as sobering as the IPCC report is, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change's report is, it is actually somewhat muted in comparison to some of the science which is now emerging. There is a concept now in science, and this is a quote from a peer-reviewed scientific report that's talking about a phenomenon called "hot house earth," in which we cross thresholds, that there is the possibility that we could cross thresholds, which we cannot turn back from in terms of the warming of the climate. And so I want to read this, just because it's so important, I think, to hear these words. "Incremental linear change to the present socio-economic systems are not enough to stabilize the Earth system. Widespread, rapid, and fundamental transformations will likely be required to reduce the risk of crossing the threshold and locking in the hot-house-earth pathway." So we know that our current efforts are insufficient in part because global emissions continue to increase. We also know, unfortunately, through recent analysis, that even though cities have been a very important part of trying to lead this effort, the scale of actions within even the most ambitious cities have not been achieving those objectives. And we know that we're not seeing the spread of climate action into other cities. There are 17,000 municipalities in the United States, less than 5% of them are actually engaged in climate action, and that number is not rapidly growing. So we need to step back and say, why is that? And how do we change that? So here are some of the things that we believe are at the root of why our strategies haven't worked to date. One of the first of these is that we've been attempting to compel change at an individual level. It's not that what we do isn't important, it's just that by trying to make people change individually, that's not going to change things at a systems level. We actually need to figure out the ways that we change the conditions so that people don't have to do the thing that is difficult or complicated or expensive. Also, that we've been taking the same approach with cities. We've been hoping that each city at a time could actually achieve these kinds of scales of action. That's not happening. We know that markets aren't driving this sufficiently. And finally, we now know that cities don't control all of the factors that they need to accomplish these goals. We don't control where our power is sourced. We don't control how automobiles are designed. We don't control many of the regional transportation investments that are critical to this. So what do we need? We need to focus on changing systems and not people. We need to start working with, as cities, outside of our boundaries and especially in partnership with many others. And we need to start creating progressive city policies. So this has been sort of the bummer part of the presentation. I promise it's going to get a little better. It almost always gets better when Jonathan speaks. So that's part of the change context that we've been talking about. It is difficult. We are in a difficult situation, but we are actually seeing some very promising change at systemic levels, and that's what Jonathan's about to talk about.
Thanks, Brett. Maybe we need another song. Okay, so thanks. Mayor, Members of Council, Jonathan Cohen. I'm the other Senior Sustainability Policy Advisor. So my part of the presentation tonight is relatively short, but Brett and I really thought it was important to highlight some of the recent policy efforts that really aims to support our climate work. And I really also wanted to start where Brett started with a little bit of gratitude because there are so many in our community that are here in the audience tonight that are watching, that maybe aren't even paying attention, that have done such great work that have allowed us, as a staff team, as a department, to be able to do this work. And we're incredibly honored to do so. So it's really important to note that this has always been about the community and the work that they have done to get us to where we are. So I want to talk just a bit about policy and say that we know that we need policies both to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and also to really prepare our communities for the impacts of climate change. And sometimes the challenge isn't necessarily technical or even economic, but rather a matter of enacting the right policies and ensuring that they're properly designed and enforced, which really requires a coordinated action across multiple sectors of government and levels of government. And to be clear, when we talk about policy reform, it's really not something that's terribly new to the city. We've been working in the area of policy for quite a while, but it really is just recently that we put a lot of attention on the climate policy. There we go. So what I wanted to do is take you through just a real quick snapshot of the different areas of policy work that we do and give you some examples. So starting kind of at the high level, at the national level, you know, your policy advisor, Karla Castillo, I think does a really terrific job at keeping us very closely aligned with our delegates in DC, making sure that we have a seat at the table when necessary, and connecting us to these federal policy issues. One in particular issue that I wanted to raise, Boulder is one of five cities in 15 states as part of a coalition still fighting the repeal of the Clean Power Plan. In fact, we actually just sent letters today to Senators Bennett and Gardner and Congressman Nagus requesting their opposition to the ACE rule, which is the administration's proposed replacement. So we continue to be engaged and involved at the federal level. Dropping down, of course, to the state, I did want to just pause and say that while it's not necessarily policy reform, Boulder, San Miguel County, and Boulder County are still involved in a lawsuit against ExxonMobil and SunCor Energy, seeking compensation for the costs of adapting to climate change impacts. Administrative actions are a relatively new area for us, but we do, in fact, try to work very closely with the administration and just recently tried to work with Polis's administration on the roadmap to 100% renewable energy. We're going to continue to try to work to have a seat at the table and be a resource for the governor's office moving forward. Moving on to regulatory actions, this has really been our sweet spot for many years. We've spent quite a bit of time at regulatory agencies like the Air Quality Control Commission and, of course, the Public Utilities Commission. And I won't go into detail about the proceedings that we've been involved in or that we're currently involved in. What I would ask you to do is look to Attachment B in your packet, and I'm going to reference that attachment a number of times because we packed a lot into that. It lists the legislative bills, it lists some of the regulatory actions that we're currently involved in, so I'll come back and reference that a number of times. So finally, the legislative actions, which I think is really what a lot of people have been interested in in terms of what's happened. The city and our coalitions, particularly the Colorado Coalition, excuse me, Colorado Communities for Climate Action, should be able to say that, CC4CA, we've been working hard to identify specific local and statewide policies that do two things. First, they create that necessary state backdrop, but also those policies that allow our local jurisdictions to go further faster. So there was a lot of attention, of course, on the General Assembly this year. At the conclusion of this last session, more than a dozen new climate and energy bills were signed into law. And I would not expect you to read this long list. Again, looking to Attachment B, what we tried to do is list the various climate and energy bills and their implications so you can get a snapshot of what they did and what it means to our local efforts here. So that arguably makes this most recent session the most impactful yet in Colorado's efforts to address the climate crisis. The bills, of course, cover an array of issues, from energy issues, building codes, efficiency standards, electric vehicle, infrastructure. So there is a lot there. One in particular that I really wanted to call attention to is House Bill 1261. And this bill, again, got a lot of attention during the session and continues to be, I think, an important one going forward. 1261 puts into statute strong short- and long-term goals for cutting climate pollution and requires the state to develop and implement regulations to achieve those mandates in a timely manner. Under the law, Colorado will reduce greenhouse gas emissions from all sectors, not just electricity, at least 26% -- and it's up on the screen -- by 2025, 50% by 2030, and 90% by 2050. But those are the goals. The law directs the Air Quality Control Commission to develop the rules to ensure those targets are met. It does leave retail electricity rulemaking to the Public Utilities Commission. Also, I would just want to point out that the legislation doesn't include penalties or rigorous timelines, and really no recourse if the state fails to meet those targets. So the next big challenge for us, as this and other important bills make their way through the rulemaking process, we want to make sure that the intent behind the legislation is retained. Another, just a quick snapshot of another important bill is Senate Bill 236. This was the Public Utilities Commission Reauthorization or Sunset Bill. Among other things, it requires investor-owned utilities like Xcel Energy, Black Hills, and now TriState to reduce their carbon and now Tri-State to reduce their carbon by 80% by 2030 and 100% by 2050. And it puts a cap on the expense that they can essentially charge back to ratepayers at 1.5%. The third bullet point is important for the work that we're doing here around kind of localization. The rules also include distribution system planning, so our hope is, is we can influence that rulemaking to ensure that it really creates opportunities for more local generation, new technologies, things like microgridding, onsite generation and storage, et cetera. It also does an important thing, but it adds a cost to carbon, a social cost to carbon for evaluating future energy projects. So this will be a really important bill to keep an eye on as it works its way through the Public Utilities Commission. So many highlights that we could go through, I'm not going to read through these. I would just say that I think there are a number of things that really align with our local goals and targets, and we really want to make sure that we harmonize what's happening at the state and it provides that backdrop to the work that we do here locally. I do want to pause, though, and emphasize the point that in terms of what these various bills mean to our local efforts, decarbonizing our electricity supply is still our number one priority. Not only is it currently our highest or biggest sector of emissions, a decarbonized electricity supply, we know, sets that stage for our ability to really think about decarbonizing other sectors. We're going to talk about this transformational change in sectors like mobility and transportation and in heating. So we know that we need to decarbonize our electricity supply, and we're not shying away from that. That is going to be our number one priority. I would also stress that we know that climate and energy policies are really a mixture of numerous interdependent and involving parts. So from our experience, we know it's easy to commit to these targets. The key now in this next frontier of climate change and climate action is really turning those pledges into reality with really laser-focused and well-designed requirements. So that means there's going to be a lot more work to do. And our staff and our coalitions are going to be very active in terms of next steps. We're preparing for the various rulemaking efforts and making sure that we're ready to fully participate. Of course, we'll keep council involved and up to date on the schedule of those rulemaking proceedings, so you know what's coming and how you might get involved in those as well. We're also already mobilizing to prepare for the next legislative session. Thankfully, we have a new political, social, and economic environment that allows the General Assembly and our regulatory agencies to really keep pushing for new energy and climate policy. And that creates the necessary foundation for long-term systemic changes and really helps define the emerging role of cities that Brett is going to explore with you next.
So that's a part of this context change, both in terms of climate change and in terms of our very significant steps in state policy. What does this mean about what the role of Boulder and other cities is in the context of climate action now? And we've been starting to talk about this notion of systems change. We would suggest that there are really essentially two questions we have to start asking of any action that we're committing to as a city that's intended to contribute to stabilizing climate. First, how does that action lead to some kind of systemic change, not just for us, but for others? And then what system-level actions actually scale and replicate? It doesn't do a lot of good if we put a lot of effort into something that only works for Boulder, but won't scale or replicate anywhere else, if our objective is ultimately to help stabilize climate. So what do we mean when we talk about systems change? One of the simple ways we thought of to describe this is that essentially it's the context in which the right choice or the choice that we need to make to stabilize climate is either the easiest choice or the only choice. Because right now, think about the context, and we'll talk about this more in a moment, around what a homeowner faces to do all the things that are necessary to improve their homes. It's very often more complicated, it's more difficult, and it's more expensive. So in that kind of a context, if we keep expecting others to take those actions and they don't, is it right to condemn them for not doing that? Or should we be saying instead, how do we change the system so that we can all make that change together? And then therefore, how do we make changes that apply to everyone, that work for everyone? And finally, how do we make sure that the costs of those steps that we need to take? Because we face the need to change a huge amount of infrastructure. How do we make sure that those costs are equitably shared, not only right now, but even into the future, for those who are going to benefit from the investments that we're making? So what we know now is that the actions that we need to take need to be bigger than our organization, bigger than our boundaries, replicable, and actionable soon. So we could think about the role of cities as essentially two domains. And we've been an absolute leader in really both of them, but especially in this notion of how do we innovate? How do we find those new things that we can do? And I think we've been tremendous in whether it's developing community solar gardens or electrification or all these different things that we've done. But now we need to think about how those apply, not just within our boundary and meeting an emissions target for Boulder, but how do they actually spread elsewhere? And that's where this notion of we need to enter into partnerships and collaborations that are pointed towards changing the rules, not changing people, changing the rules, so that it applies to everyone, it makes it possible for everyone, and that also change the markets. Because of course, as we know, money drives so much of whether this transformation happens or not. So Jonathan and I are going to give you now tangible examples. We've been talking kind of in an abstract sense. Let's talk about it in a very concrete sense. I'm going to talk about it in the context of a particular program, and Jonathan's going to talk about this systemic approach in the context of policy. So in the context of a programmatic effort, as Jonathan mentioned, not only do we have to clean up our electricity source, it has to come from renewable sources, we then need to move almost everything we can into using electricity, right? That clean electricity. This is what we call electrification. Boulder has been an early leader in this. In fact, some of you have seen this slide. It was from three years, two years ago, when we were talking about this effort, that Boulder launched in 2016. It's one of the first cities in the West to do this, to figure out how we could support our residents in switching out their natural gas appliances to high-efficiency electric heat pumps. And we initially did that analysis, we started to demonstrate that it could be economically viable, and then we did that thing that we just talked about. We reached out to others. We've talked to New York City, who got very interested, Washington DC, Burlington, Vermont, Boston, San Francisco. And by developing that sort of critical mass of cities, because you know, Boulder doesn't carry a lot of weight out in the marketplace, we were able to go to Mitsubishi and Daikin and LG and Panasonic and bring them together as an industry collaborative to say, how do we work together as cities and as industry to create a market transformation here? And so we worked over two years to develop a strategy to implement residential electrification. And Boulder, once again, was one of the first out with this effort. It wasn't in any way perfect, because of course, that's what Boulder's good at. We help innovate early so that others can follow. But we launched the Comfort 365 program. We worked with Mitsubishi, who actually put in a lot of marketing resources and financial incentives. We worked with the county through our Energy Smart program, and we were very successful by the measures of such an effort. We increased adoption by over 300%. What that means, though, in the context of our current setting, is we went from about 50 people getting heat pumps a year to maybe 200 or 300. And we would know whether it's 200 or 300, but as you probably know, not everybody files a building permit for the things that they're doing out there. But the point is, we were very successful, except we weren't successful at the scales necessary to actually achieve the kind of change that we need to make. So let's think about what it takes to do that kind of a scale of change. Well, let's actually think about this from the homeowner's perspective. To really do electrification, you should first, of course, as we always say, start with efficiency. That's not cheap, but it's relatively modest in cost. But then I have to replace all my appliances. That starts to get quite expensive. And if we then actually want to make the source of our energy locally clean and we put solar on top of that, we would be looking at each household in the community needing to spend somewhere in the neighborhood of $30,000 to $50,000. That's what we literally need for people to do, to be able to achieve this objective. Now, there are many benefits to this. We shouldn't say that this is just an upfront cost. I put in a heat pump in my own house. I'm part of that sort of guinea pig cohort. And it's fantastic. I don't have the air quality issues that I had with my gas furnace. There are many ways that I have more control over the system, but it was more expensive, it was more complicated. And so we're facing this situation for each household. And then if you think about, okay, now let's think about this in the context of our climate strategy. We need every household to do this in Boulder. There's 18,000 households. What does that literally mean in terms of the cost? 18,000 households times $38,000 is over $600 million. Now, my colleagues didn't want me to actually put this number out, because they thought, you're just going to scare everybody away, and they're going to prove that we can't do this. I want to actually say to you, we've been here before. We've faced similar, very expensive infrastructure change situations before. In fact, it was about 100 years ago that we created regulated monopoly utilities to do exactly this, to aggregate lots of money and deploy a lot of infrastructure to make it available to a lot of people, and then spread that cost out over society and over time. We know how to do this. In fact, my colleague Jonathan has been working on the vehicle to do it.
I was so intrigued, I wasn't even ready. So I wanted to talk just very quickly. Brett talks about Boulder as this ignition system, and I just want to give you a different example and a little bit different flavor as we swing back to the policy realm. A couple of years ago, we were really facing this issue of, as we really, really started to dig into this idea of how do we influence policy at the state level, we recognized that, A, we were just one voice, B, we really needed to create some solidarity with other players in this space, whether it be local jurisdictions or other partners. And so I'm really proud of the fact that we really started to pull together a number of communities to build this coalition. Something Brett said earlier, too, I just want to emphasize, we know that major climate drivers are controlled or managed at scales larger than cities. So that underscores that importance of influencing or engaging with other cities and entities. So a big part of our reality is that we have to balance that work inside and outside of our boundaries. Thankfully, the work that we're doing locally is really part of a much bigger effort to fight climate change, and much of it is done through these regional collaboratives. So one in particular that I was just alluding to, Colorado Communities for Climate Action, or CC4CA, just as a reminder to council, is a coalition of 28 now counties and municipalities across the state advocating for effective state climate policy. And as you might imagine, the membership spans western slope and front range, small and rural towns, major suburbs, and much of our regional work looking forward is going to be done through this coalition. You know, just as a personal note, it really is gratifying. We just had our annual retreat in Vail, and the excitement and the interest in the coalition and recognizing the importance and the work that we've done, and how we've really been able to get a seat at the table with policymakers, has really been extraordinary. This kind of regional collaborative or climate collaborative is really getting a lot of attention outside of Boulder as well. Currently, we're working with the Institute for Sustainable Communities, who was funded by the Kresge Foundation, to research this concept as governance paradigm or a regionalism as a governance paradigm when it comes to climate. So that's something that's quite unique. We're looking at ways to both scale, so how do we think about this organization and the way we use this coalition to scale up? How do we look to ways to replicate, whether it be in other states or in other ways to kind of use this model moving forward? Also, just as a note, council will be getting an invitation relatively soon from Park City, Utah. They're actually convening a group later on this year of 20 or 30 cities who are moving in a really big way on this regional climate collaborative concept, and they see Boulder as a leader in this. So really using this vehicle of collaboratives and coalitions to really drive home our message and amplify our message has really, really been extraordinary just in two years. So I would expect to see this organization grow and some of the model that we use to develop our policy agenda and really influence policy at the state level to really take off. So I would say, Brett, would you want to talk about the next steps in developing the 2030 plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we have a sense that we've learned some lessons. We have a pretty good picture of the core areas of action that we need to take. There are still some innovations that need to be developed. There are a lot of innovations we have developed, we need to figure out how to take to scale. So this is the framework that we will talk about in a few minutes, just that we want to get feedback. Do you think this is the right framework? Have we got it organized correctly? But the next step is, how do we bring the best and brightest, as we always do in Boulder, together? Both our community and organizations and other stakeholders who have been working on this, and look for what those innovations are in each of these areas and how we take them to scale. And I think one of the things that's really critical to understand about our suggestion here is that we need to, in a way, recognize that we aren't the center of this. We're a very significant and important part of it. But for this to be successful, we need to actually mobilize and catalyze action at all levels and in all sectors, some of it which we will never touch or even maybe even ever know about. And that our role is to help inspire and coordinate and facilitate and get some of this stuff moving out. And so we've started to reach out already to a variety of organizations and say, are you in? Can you help us? Do you want to be a part of this? And actually ask them to somewhat formally commit to this. So we've drafted a letter of intent. We haven't signed any of these, but all of these partners have actually signed already their signature lines on these letter of intents, saying, we're in. We want to help in various ways, in various of these areas, to start moving this agenda forward. There are others that we are reaching out to or want to reach out to in all of these different sectors, and as you can see, we need to reach across all of these sectors, the public sector, the private sector, the nonprofit sector, the academic and research communities.
So one thing that's missing on here are just normal people. And so you need to get the people in there, and you could do that through Sierra Club, you could do that through neighborhood organizations, through HOAs. And I know I used to be an eco-cycle block leader and then a region leader, and I think that on-the-ground, block-to-block communication amongst neighbors really does make people change in their ways. And I know you're saying we can't change people, but I think we do need to still change people. Systems can't be the only thing. And so I think this is just a couple, but I think you could add a whole lot more and get an army on the ground of people who want to do this, not only in Boulder, but beyond Boulder.
Thank you, and we're almost done, by the way. And part of the, no, no, thank you. And your point is, of course, extremely important, and I wanted to just note for you that, in addition to all those organizations, note in the lower right-hand corner that we actually are launching a place for people and neighborhood organizations and others to go and say, I'm in, I want to be a part of this, too. And we've already started to get those calls. And so let me just, a couple of things, and I also want to show you how we're thinking about the places that we engage more of the community. But I do want to point out something, because it has come up in conversations that I know folks have been having. Who are we inviting in terms of some of these institutional partners? And one in particular has come out, and I've just circled it and read here, as, why are you talking to Shell? Why would you consider an organization like Shell? Like, aren't they the enemy? And why is business even perhaps a part of this process? And I think most of us, or many of us at least, believe we have to have all parties in this game, all resources in this game. And I think we've fairly clearly demonstrated to the, in fact, oil and gas industry, that if you aren't going to take a proactive step, we'll take you on in another way. Because we are, in fact, suing some of them, too. So I think we'll plan to work with them one way or the other. So in terms of, fair, right? So what are we proposing in terms of a process? At least in terms of a timeframe, it's essentially four phases. We're closing the first phase now, that's tonight. We're asking you to endorse going forward in this effort. Then we want to start bringing these different parties together and creating a process and plan what that engagement effort looks like. We would be developing an information packet for you somewhere towards early fall that would outline what that process will look like, and then launch it in earnest. So there are a variety of different places that we're going to directly reach out into the community and invite that involvement. There'll be some kind of a public launch event sometime in September. Then each of these different focus area groups is going to be asked to have different places where they're engaging the community and involving the community. There'll be a midpoint check-in somewhere in late fall, and then we'll have a final kind of wrap-up of how that strategy is starting to come together early next year. And then we'll take all that and that community feedback and engagement and bring that back to you somewhere around the end of the first quarter of next year. So just about finished here. I just want to note that in terms of that letter of intent that we're asking our partners to sign, this is one of the core aspects of what we're saying. We want you to join an effort whose objective is to work across multiple sectors and create strategies that are rapidly replicated across the world. So I'll just close with this. That is Nathaniel. It feels like we're standing in a desert. That's my son Nathaniel, standing on one of our open space properties, April of 2018. That property was devastated by a windstorm in 2016. It lost the entire, not only topsoil level, it lost the A horizon. It was nothing. And then through the remarkable work of our colleagues in open space and mountain parks and innovative organizations like MAD Agriculture and the fine work of the folks at the Natural Resource Conservation Service and others, we started, and in the remarkable persistence and courage of Marcus McCauley and the McCauley Farms, whose property property adjacent to ours was being impacted by that, we started to use some of the techniques that he had developed and others that we've been experimenting with to start working on soil regeneration and carbon sequestration, and that was just eight months later. And what I'm trying to illustrate is that there is a remarkable capacity of resilience that is built into the land, and it's built into us, and it's built into our communities. And we have to find a way to mobilize that and to work with that and to start bringing it forward so that we can address this challenge that we have. So, with that, I'll take us now back to the questions that we brought here to you this evening, and we're ready to have a conversation. Thank you.
So, you have under your—I don't know, page 26 of your slides, other potential partners, and you have the public, the private, nonprofit, and academic. I would just put it out there, neighborhoods—
Sorry.
—or HOAs or something. People make it its own heading.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, maybe—do you guys want to free-form it or tackle those questions in order?
Order.
Order, okay. Number one, strategies. Sam?
So, thank you all. This is great. Really well set up memo, very clear and comprehensive, so it was nice work. I think the first question that I have is, should we align our goals with the state goals? So, we are 80% reduction by 2050, the state is 90% by 2050. Do I have that correct? Okay, so it seems to me like one of the very first things would be to line ourselves up with the context that we're working in, especially because that's a more ambitious goal than we have now. Has staff thought of this? Is there any major problem with that?
No, in fact, we've done a little bit of analysis to determine what it would take. And in fact, it seemed like a logical place to go, once that legislation had passed, is to synchronize those two, so.
Okay, got it.
Can I just call it quits? Because not all of their goals are more ambitious than ours, so I think what you'd be saying is to ramp up where they are more ambitious, but not touch them where we're more ambitious.
That's correct, yeah. I was specifically just talking about the 2050 goal, you know, where we want to get to for that.
And most people agree. Does anybody not agree with that?
I—
With the 90% by 2050?
No, I agree with the 90%, but I agree with Erin also. We don't want to backtrack on anything.
Right.
That was not the intent of the comment. It was just the particular goal.
I just figured we all agreed, so there you have it. Okay.
Great. And then another, I think, big-picture question is, you have circular materials economy. And a question that came up for me, thinking about that, and that's a good thing, you know, I appreciate what that is. It's like recycling and reducing and so on, but I think it's bigger than that. So, there's a whole financial systems piece to this, right? There's who we bank with, there's who our insurance company is, there's the entire kind of spectrum of the financial system that we interact with, and that's a leverage point for us, right? And both what we do specifically in Boulder and then how we advertise what it is we do. So, we've tried a couple times to talk about, are we banking with the right people? You know, is Morgan Chase the right bank for us? Well, they have all the services, but they also fund pipelines. So, I would suggest, as an idea, that instead of circular materials economy, it be circular systems economy, because it's broader, I think, because I was trying to figure out, in these five focus areas, where would you put the financial? And there's no easy place to fit it, except if you make it circular systems economy, then you're thinking about—and if you look at your slide that has the three, the triangle, the other two have the word "systems" in them. And so, it seems to me that that would be something that encompasses, like, how do we think about all of those other pieces? Because you're talking about wanting a systemic approach, right? And so, from a big-picture standpoint, I think we need to be thinking about the other pieces that we do business with and the transactions that we have. So, every leverage point possible, the city should not only do its work, but talk to CC4CA, talk to our legislators. And on that note, I think it's important to thank people here at the high level. Staff, of course, you guys are doing great. The community, for all the support and the attention, the suggestions. And I want to thank, in particular, our state legislators. The work that got done at the State House this year is historic. It is unbelievable, and it was our state legislators locally and our governor who carried a lot of that water. So, I'll stop there. That's my big-picture comments.
Indeed. Mary, then Lisa.
So, I echo the gratitude that Sam just expressed. And I have a question. Earlier in the presentation, Brett, you spoke about the legislation that was just passed in this past session. And you mentioned that the creation of the rules for the legislation has no timeline. Can you talk a little bit about how typically that process works, and can it be intentionally delayed? Can it go faster? And how are those two things pushed and pulled?
Yeah, thanks, Mary. So, when I talked about the rulemaking, maybe just unpack that a little bit, it's really a question of volume. There were so many bills this year that then have to go through a rulemaking process, and each goes to its respective regulatory agency. So, some will go through the Air Quality Control Commission, some will go to the Public Utilities Commission. So, it's really getting those things scheduled. I think the really important thing is that, just as Sam mentioned, I think our legislators had the foresight to really acknowledge that we wanted to make sure that the urgency related to these bills was so incredible that they did make sure that there was a fiscal note associated with the bills. So, there were staff and money available and earmarked to get it done, essentially, and a process and a timeline. Some of the bills really, I think, are less aggressive in terms of how they move forward. The great thing is, is that we have great leadership at those regulatory agencies who are really pushing to make sure that it's done in a timely manner. Some of them are complex. Some of the bills, in terms of the rules that are going to have to be created, are complicated, though what we know from meeting with, for example, John Putnam and Will Tour and some of these agency heads, this is their number-one priority, to make sure that they get the schedule put out, that there is a process in place to get the rules enacted. The Public Utilities Commission is a little bit different, because essentially, that bill, the PC reauthorization bill, it kind of plants the rules within their ongoing proceedings. And so, it's how they are going to do their work moving forward, not a separate set of rules necessarily. So, I'm not terribly concerned. I don't think that there is a general feeling that there's going to be a big delay. I think everyone's really watching to make sure this gets done in a timely manner, is the way I would respond.
Thank you.
Lisa, and then Erin.
So, I read the memo, and I understand where you want to go, but I do have some concerns. And one of the concerns is, I read something, and I thought we actually had more compliance, but that of the 20,000 rental units we have in Boulder, only 7,000 are compliant with our green—
Smart Regs.
—regulations.
Smart Regs.
Smart Regs, yeah. And so, what's happening with the other 13,000? I guess my point is, I'm hoping we don't, like, stop doing stuff that we have been doing and has been very successful. And I would hope that comment in there was not to say we're not going to do anything more, but that's a sense I got. And that would be terrible, given that we have 7,000 homeowners who made their houses energy efficient and paid for that and took the carrot and then now the later thing. And I would be hoping that we are going to enforce those smart regs on the other 13,000 homes that aren't compliant, and I'm really shocked that they're not compliant.
I'd love to answer that. I'm Elizabeth Vasad, go with the Climate Initiatives Department. Smart Regs was an incredibly successful program for the city. 97% of the 23,000 units were compliant by the December 31st, 2018 deadline.
So, what's with the number in this memo?
It's page 21. What it says is, "Smart Regs led to efficiency, improved efficiency in more than 7,000 rental units."
No, that might just be an error. Apologies.
So, the other ones are already compliant? Is that the thinking?
So, a large percentage of the rental units were compliant at the baseline inspection, and then those 7,000 were the ones that got compliant through Energy Smart. Many of the other rental units could get compliant on their own. They didn't have to go through Energy Smart, but that was the number that we had that went through Energy Smart.
Okay, well, it didn't come off that—
Yeah, apologies for that.
Yeah. So, I'm also kind of interested in, as you guys will know, I'll say the word, demolitions, and that we aren't doing anything about demolitions, really. I mean, we've—we're tracking them a little bit, but at this point in time, you can demolish your house if it's less than 50 years old and you don't need a review, and there's no fee incurred for demolishing that house. And then, it's the same thing. So, somebody scrapes a house in reasonable construction, and so there should be a sliding scale. I recognize not all houses are the same, but when you scrape a house, there should be a fee incurred on the—especially since we don't have a landfill, one of our biggest methane contributors to the atmosphere. And we don't have—we have net-zero goals, but when somebody builds a new big house, we don't have any fee for the embodied energy used in building that new big house and all those materials. So, we should be talking about that. I mean, these are things that I really hope we aren't trying to not change people's behavior, because we kind of have to change people's behavior, I think. And so, if we just are allowing ourselves to demolish either hospitals, or demolish houses, or demolish buildings that we say aren't significant and do it without a penalty, we're really not contributing to the problem.
Lisa, I'm sure that Kara is going to answer this question, but I just want to make sure I clarify that, when I say we don't change people, I'm saying we don't—we have to change the systems that people operate within.
Right.
And so, I think we're actually in complete agreement.
Okay, good. So, in our planning department and our building department, we should be looking at fees when people are scraping houses or building new houses with materials that are new, because there's embodied energy associated with those.
Yeah, and I guess I was just going to clarify also—oh, sorry, Kara Mertz, Climate Initiatives Department. Those issues will be addressed in the next update to our building codes, to address the demolition, to address fees for scraping. And while—I think council got an update about a month ago on those, on the direction we're heading with the new building codes, we're not going to be including embodied energy in that just yet, because we are keeping that on the horizon, just to see what the best practices are before we launch into that. There's certain things around embodied energy that can't really be included in building codes, so we want to make sure that we're careful about that. But there definitely—we're addressing some of the loopholes with demolition permits and fees associated with the recycling around demo.
Thank you. And then, continuing on in embodied energy, there are building materials that are appropriate to use versus building materials that are not. So, trees, which are probably not so appropriate to use, versus straw bale and adobe, which is very useful. And so, there should be incentives in place where we encourage builders to use straw bale and adobe. We have those in our code. We've had them since, I think, 97. And with those types of materials, your heat is hardly anything, and your air conditioning is nothing. And so, we talk about the climate change and warming of the climate and the need for additional air conditioning, which I would say is way too cold in here right now, and always is, has been for a long time. And that we really don't need air conditioning. We need to think in other ways in which we cool the air that we live in. So, I'd like to see those kinds of thoughts. And then, food consumption, that needs to be in there, and the whole— and these young women brought that up. Good for you guys. And, you know, really reducing our meat consumption and the methane associated with meat, that needs—I mean, we can't just talk about it. And then, my last concern would be, and I think this is all great, and I want to thank you guys for all the awesome work you do, but my only concern is diverting our time from the muni, which is where we get the biggest bang for the buck in reducing our carbon reductions. And moving forward with complete intent to continue on our municipalization path, and that you guys don't get into too many smaller projects, that that diverts your focus.
And just to speak a little bit to the muni, the fight continues, as you well know. We're certainly moving forward with all of the activities associated with developing those costs to inform a vote, be it 2020, 2021. And I really don't see this as detracting. I really see it as complementing. How do we go about really leveraging? One of the really advantageous things we'll be doing through the process of updating our strategy has to do with that community engagement. Well, that gives us opportunity to talk as well about where we are with the muni and what's happening, and ensure that we're reaching a broader audience. So, I really see it as giving us the ability to complement one another.
Great. Erin, and then me, and then—well, we'll circle back. Cindy, okay. And then Mary.
So, thank you for this. So, you know, the initial part of your presentation was an important wake-up call. I mean, it's all things we know about already, but I appreciate you calling it forward. And of course, we can't solve this in our city alone, so I really appreciate you looking at the systems approach to figure out how we can come up with solutions that are exportable and replicable. So, I look forward to seeing what you come up with. You know, you think about maybe modules, like if we develop different sets of strategies, that one community might be better suited to one set, another community might be better suited to another one, but if we are able, along with partners, to say, hey, we've tried this here, other cities have tried it as well, they work really well, and you could take this piece, but hey, this other piece may not be the best one for you. Don't take that part. Anyway, it's a way that we can play a larger role in solving the problem. So, I'm very enthusiastic. I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with in the next few months.
I wanted to jump in with a few thoughts. I'm so glad we're having this conversation, and I appreciate that both city staff and our voters and a lot of the organizations in our city continue to make this a priority, because I do think it is a number-one priority. And what I see us doing here is basically adaptive management. We're trying stuff, we're seeing how it works, we're evaluating it, we're taking a look at how the context is changing, how we are actively changing the context, and then reflecting on how we should do things next. And I think that's a very important conversation, so I'm glad we're doing it. And I'm—I think in general, what you've laid out makes a lot of sense. I do feel like we're at a historic moment where—at the state legislature, where a lot of, frankly, a lot of Boulder and Boulder County legislators are playing lead roles. We've got a governor from Boulder. We've got Congressman Nagus on the Select Climate Committee and playing a leadership role to really leverage all the great thinking and the big brains we have in our city. And anyhow, so, I do feel like the time is now, and you guys are obviously reflecting that. In general, the three—the triangle with equity and resilience in the middle, I think, makes a lot of sense. I think you raised a good point about banking and the other ways we have leveraged that we should also be taking into consideration. I do appreciate the equity piece, which I know a lot of people were a part of, and of course, resilience is key, right? We already know it's upon us. We already know it's upon us, all the impacts. I guess I will say that the carbon sequestration piece, which is kind of the hopeful piece of this, is how do we use natural systems to really draw down atmospheric carbon, I think, is one of the frontiers? And I feel as, the people are just trying to figure that out, out there. And I'll just, I'll mention this, there's several interim committees that are preparing for the next legislative session. One of them is on zero waste, and I, for my day job, I'm going to go testify for them tomorrow. But one of the issues is how do we help address organics management in the carbon sequestration piece? And how do we scale it rapidly? And how do we take advantage of what's in the existing ag, you know, the USDA and then Natural Resource Conservation Service? How do we make use of that apparatus to propel carbon farming forward? And I think, how do I say this? The field's wide open to help get that figured out. So, I guess I would underscore that. Our hope is that that, the pilots, the studies, the beginnings of that framework will happen next legislative session, but there's a lot of unknowns to figure out. So, I guess I just wanted to highlight that. I don't know if I'm supposed to say this, but I'm going to say it. I was on a call with Congressman Nagus yesterday with mayors from the 20, the Second CD, and he did announce that the first field hearing for the Select Climate Committee, for, you know, the Congressional Select Climate Committee, is going to be in Boulder. And so, yay. And I know that staff has been talking a lot to them about that, and the dates and all that will be announced soon. But one of the things that the congressman stressed is, it's because Colorado cities have stepped up and really committed to trying to figure out the path to 100% renewable energy, that he was able to bring the first field hearing to Colorado. And, what?
When, you said?
Okay, I'll tell you what he said. Again, in the July 31st, August 1st timeframe. But anyhow, I guess, to me, that also points to the work of CC4A, because it's not enough, and yet it's a beginning, and it's building momentum, and it's a real opportunity. And he, inasmuch asked, no, he, he asked all of the folks on the phone from across the Second CD, keep bringing forward these city solutions, so that we can ripple them out nationally. So, anyhow, I think this is the right work to be doing, and I think we all have a unique window to really accelerate these efforts. So, I guess those are my big picture thoughts. Yeah.
Just a quick colloquy. When Bob and I were in Washington for the National League of Cities, we got to sit with Congressman Nagus for about 20 minutes. And what he wanted to talk about was his environmental action policies. And he has like five of them that he's looking at rolling out in DC. And so, we're very lucky to have him, and he is very interested in working with the cities on the ground about solutions. And so, it's great news. He, he had told us when we were there that this hearing might happen in Colorado first, and then we heard it wasn't. And so, it's good to hear that it will be. It'll be a lot of fun.
And maybe the, maybe the press can confirm with him, but that's what he announced on the, that's what he announced on the call. Okay, I have Cindy. I'm going to get everybody who hasn't talked yet, and then I'll circle back to Mary.
Well, I'm not sure how high-level mine are at this point, but you're a hard act to follow here, Zan. But it's great to hear. It's very good news about everything that our congressman is doing to try and move this forward, because it is, as you say, this is an historic moment, with the new knowledge that we have about how rapidly all of this is coming down. I agree with Lisa about keeping our focus on the muni, since that's the biggest thing. But these others, I think, can help in the meantime, and help engage people, as Steve did say. I thought about the banking. This is something we talked about as a council last year, and it didn't go anywhere. But if we wanted to make a strong statement, this is something that we could take up and actually move on. Sam made reference to that. And I would like to see us do something that way. I think it would really, again, move us forward in a big way. I know there was some reticence in staff's part, but this is important. And it's a place where we could move and, and make a difference. I don't know if CC4A is all Second CD or not, are there all of those communities? I would love to see some collaboration with Eastern and Northeastern Colorado, Southeastern Colorado, where they've had all kinds of issues throughout the years, the century. And it would also help politically, I think, to move out of this front-range sort of view that we've had, and we seem to have, the bubble. And so, those are, those are basically the things that I would like to see moving forward. And the carbon sequestration, very, very, it's, it is encouraging. I talked to Brad about, and some people have seen, the biggest little farm, which was one of the happy notes about what can happen to ecosystems when there is some effort put into it. And as a city, I would like to see us really move forward with that on our open space lands, where we have the ability to do that on the irrigated ag lands that have been disturbed. And that's a place where we could put any possible new monies that we may get. So, thank you very much for the work. Thanks for the songs. It's, it's encouraging to have this upbeat approach to what is really a dire situation. Thank you.
Could I just say very quickly that, kind of building also on what you said, Zan, the ag context might be one of the best opportunities we have to work across political lines around climate. And so, I think this next legislative session is actually going to be very important as a way to try to build that coalitional effort around those issues.
And then Bob.
Okay, well, you guys have all kind of said a little bit of what I was hoping to say, but first, thank you to staff, and thank you to the community, thanks to the young women, that was fantastic, and part of what makes this job really fun. So, I think the biggest thing besides, I mean, just the fantastic job, and I, I mean, I absolutely love this idea, I think it's really out-of-the-box thinking that's going to push us forward with what's needed, is that, you know, kind of going off of what Cindy and even Lisa said a little bit, is I think we are so fortunate that we've taxed ourselves to have this open space, and we have thousands of acres of ag land. And if sequestration is proving to be such a viable option, we have a huge opportunity to take advantage of it. And so, not only can we work from the side of trying to reduce what we do, but now we can impact it from another side. And what's so wonderful about it is that it can be worked with the natural barriers that already exist. So, as much as we can move that forward, I say go, run. So, thank you so much.
Bob?
So, I'll underline something that Aaron said a few minutes back. I think the most important word that I heard tonight was replicable. You know, leadership is fine, but if, if no one follows you, you're not a leader, right? And I think your, your broader focus on systems is, is absolutely right, because we have to be looking at systems, not individual parts of this. And we have to do it in a way that, as Aaron indicated, other cities, other states, other countries can, can do what we're doing. Innovation, we're, we're a wealthy community, we have the opportunity to be innovative, we have the opportunity to experiment with things, but we, we have to be very thoughtful about those things, and ensure that whatever it is that we're trying to do is not just feel-good, not just something that makes us happy that we're contributing. I think I did the math. Boulder's less than one thousandth of 1% of the population of the earth, right? We can do all sorts of stuff here, and be all sorts of zeros and hundred percents and all that other kind of stuff, but Mumbai is still polluting, right? And so, we have to do something that people in, in, whether it's in Loveland, or in Cleveland, or in Mumbai, can look at and say, you know, that's pretty cool, and that's pretty effective, and that's pretty economic, and that's really impactful. And so, I would just encourage us, as we spend the next few months, coming up with these ideas, to make sure that they're replicable around the country and around the world.
Mary, did you have something else on the big picture?
Yeah.
Because, okay, well, then, yep.
So, a couple of days ago, we received an interesting paper. It was called "Leverage Points: Places to Intervene in a System." And I was fortunate enough to be in one of those places where it seems like we really live in a bubble, in El Paso, Texas, where people have several large trucks in their gar, in their driveways and drive everywhere, and it's really, really, really hot. But anyway, I had the opportunity, because it's so hot, to read through the paper. And at the, it goes through all of the places to intervene in a system. And what we talked about, and have been talking about, are some of those things that are lower on this place to intervene in a system. The top place to intervene in a system, the number one place, is transcending paradigms. And so, along those lines, we have page, it's slide number 19, where it talks about the characteristics of systems change. And in terms of the big picture, getting back to that, what seems like the right thing to do as we move forward, and take all of these ideas that were just brought up tonight, and run them through this lens of the right choice is the only choice, is the easy choice. All of those things, it's bigger than our organization, it's bigger than our boundaries, it's replicable, and it's soon. So, I do think that when you run things through this lens of systems change and these characteristics, you're, you're doing that top-level intervention. So, so that's what I would ask, is that we run all of our actions or, or ideas through this lens of, of the systems change characteristics. I also, I, I guess I have some, a follow-up question to my own earlier question that Jonathan answered, which was the, the rulemaking and, and the timeline. And you said that it's going to happen soon, and what as soon is that, a year, two years?
Well, again, it depends on which rule and which bill you're talking about, but some are already underway. Many have deadlines the middle of next year. And so, I guess I would just revisit my response and to say that I think we feel that sense of urgency also. And so, while I mentioned that there are a number of organizations who are really going to be pushing, we're going to be right there pushing as well, to ensure that the timelines are, are ones that meet the urgency of the situation. So, right now, we are trying to work through our coalitions to ensure that we're keeping the pressure on, to make sure that those schedules get released, that they are done soon, and that we understand the, the timeline, so we see an end to the rulemaking process as well. So, we're really looking at another year for the entire package to go through the process.
Is that SB 236, the one that's got the 80% by 2030 and 100% by 2050? Is that one of the ones that's top-top?
That would be 1261.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
So, again, remember that the, the one you just referenced, the PUC reauthorization bill, so that really looks at how those new rules are applied to the utilities as they bring their, their resource plans to the commission. And so, that's where those will be applied, and that's, that's where that lens shows up. The others, in terms of 1261, there is a whole new rulemaking that's going to take place at the Air Quality Control Commission. And so, that's what we are eager to see. We want to see that timeline and that process laid out. And again, we, we want to see that soon.
Okay, so, so we really don't know, but we'll see that soon.
That's right. Yeah, they have not released the...
But it's likely to be at least a year.
So, I, I guess I would like, like us to be kind of kept abreast of what those schedules look like, because I, I think that falls under the, the implications in the systems change of soon. And, and then play that up against our ideas that we have, and see how those timelines line up or don't line up, because we only have, what, 10 years? So, so I think we have to be very cognizant of what we're doing in the city and how it lines up with that urgency in, in, in the whole situation that we're in. I also had a question about the, the model that was used for estimate, and this is, this is along the lines of, right now, that we have time to kind of look at our municipal utility and kind of ask some questions about it. And so, one of the questions I would have is, when was the last time that the model was revised? And does it make sense to revise it with what we know now? So, that's, that's a question. And, and then ask ourselves other questions, so that we have the latest and best information as we go towards the vote, the public vote next year. And I, I think it's, we need to do our due diligence to make sure that we have the best available information and the most current information, and that we make sure that municipal utility is the right, is the right way to go. And again, run it through the system change, this, this lens of the characteristics. I think we have to keep doing that and keep reminding ourselves to do that. And then, with respect...
Do you want them to respond to the model question?
Oh, yes, please.
What our intent is, is we'll have several milestones that we reach here mid-fourth quarter of this year, with some engineering estimates that we'll have, and other costs associated with municipalization that we'll be able to update. And those, we'll start plugging those into our financial forecast tool. And our intent is, by the end of the year, to be able to provide a revised model with the new information that we have. And then again, we'll take that out to the public. And as you know, we're moving forward with condemnation and anticipate 12 months, hopefully, to develop that cost associated with the purchase of the facilities.
And then, thank you for that. I also have a question about, to try and better understand, you know, the, the gap between our 100% by 2030 for electricity and the 80%. So, I, I would like to understand that gap. What does that mean in terms of tons of carbon? And, and how does that compare to what can be done with carbon sequestration? Because it's really, that's something that we have to do. We have to do the carbon sequestration now, that's, we have no choice. So, how does that gap line up against the actual numbers? So, so, yeah, so what, what's the difference in, in tons of carbon?
So, certainly what the state has done, and where we presume XL Energy and the other large investor-owned utilities will be moving to achieve these new goals is really plausible. It's really fantastic what is going to happen. And it does take us significantly forward on the single, one of the components of why we're moving forward with municipalization. And that's the decarbonization path. It contributes, or what the state has done will take us part of, most of the way there. What it doesn't do is that local control, and that ability to really decentralize our system. As Jonathan noted, the Public Utilities Commission will be going through some rulemaking having to do with distribution systems and distribution modeling, which is basically what the municipal utility is, is a distribution system. And we'll participate in that rulemaking with the intent of trying to provide the level of freedom that the community wants in its ability to participate in the electric system, and to move forward with things like microgrids, and to really contribute to things like resiliency. We don't know what the end result of that rulemaking will be, of course. The other is that local control, which there's that component of what we do on the system. But a part of that is also the revenues and our ability to reinvest the revenues from a municipal utility back into the system. If the community decides undergrounding of the distribution system is their highest priority, the city has the freedom to make those choices. All of that won't go away or won't change as we move forward, and as the state moves forward on this new legislation. But ultimately, it really comes down to a community conversation. What, how valuable is that, and those other aspects? How valuable is that to the rest, to the community that we achieve those? And that's part of our intent as we go out and we talk to the community. And that's part of our intent as we go out and we talk to the community, but also as we go to a vote, the community will be telling us how important this is to us.
And with respect to the revenues, you mentioned the revenues. Will that be included? That'll be part of the revised model, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we will continue to update those as things change. Everything from, you know, interest rates can certainly affect what we project as revenues to we've done initial requests for pricing on power supply. We'll be doing another request, a more formal request for power supply. All of those affect both cost and the revenues and how the utility will operate.
And then I had, sorry Suzanne, but I have, I had another, this is a comment. And this is something I noticed in the memo where you have just transition or equity and resilience in the middle of the diagram. I think, I thought that was a great way to look at it. And then the other three items around the perimeter. But in the slide on the timeline, it's shown as a separate line item and not an overarching item that you pay attention to. And I think, I think instead of being its own line item, it actually needs to be in everything else and not something that is thought about secondarily. It needs to be the driving thing, as it's shown in the diagram. So that was just something I noticed in the way that the schedule was placed.
And I will say, that's certainly our intent. And all of our conversations have been about how critical and how central to every aspect of what we do that that needs to be. So our intent was, make sure it's in the middle.
Okay.
I think we...
Great.
Limited by graphic.
That's good to know. And I think that's all I have. And, you know, just to, I do want to understand the carbon sequestration numbers and how that compares to what, you know, what can we do? And how that scalability of that particular action can benefit. And I was intrigued by the fact that Jonathan said that that's our opportunity to work with coalitions, cross-party coalitions. And I think that that's, that would be great to understand just how much can be accomplished with that, working in those cross-party coalitions.
So Sam, and then we're gonna, we have a few specific questions we need to address. Go ahead.
Well, just on the muni issue in particular, there's the just transition piece that runs through everything, and there's a resilience piece that runs through everything. And one of the key things about having a local-controlled electric utility would be the community can tell us how much resilience they want in their electric system, because there won't be a profit margin in any cash flows. So anything that we have that we want to put in reserve for resilience will be able to put into undergrounding. Another more complicated one is, it's not in a private utility's best interest to enable microgrids or self-generation, which can, on a day-to-day basis, cut into their revenue stream. But when an emergency comes, becomes a backup power system for a neighborhood or for a building that's a critical system. So I think that resilience piece is a lens that we need to look at the muni through, particularly in light that the memo calls out that resilience is going to be a requirement. You know, it is going to happen that we're going to need these things more and more frequently. And so some of the pieces that we've looked at in the past about the muni, I think, may get rebalanced with what's coming in climate change. And I think the ability, not only to underground and have the general distribution system be more robust is important, but also enabling end-users and nodes to be more robust, because we don't care if a profit gets cut into, because really, all we need is to make sure that we can maintain the distribution system as the community wants it. So I think that resilience running through everything is something that we're going to need to use to analyze the muni as we learn more about the costs.
Okay. Let's come back to the climate emergency resolution at the end. Can you put up the four, five, and six? Four and five, Lisa mentioned some other organizations and stakeholders, namely the public and neighborhoods. Were there others? And also, do folks have issues or thoughts on the letters of intent and participation agreements? Mary, Aaron, Mirabai.
So yes, I did, in that same email that we got from Chris Hoffman, he had some suggestions that I thought were really good ones. Let me see if I can find them. There were like 14 suggestions that, if we can go back and look at that email where he listed things like understand each other's goals and priorities and each other's core processes and on and on, with the final one being mutual trust. So I think those were really excellent points to include in some sort of a letter of intent.
Aaron.
So I was just giving the thumbs up that you're on the right track, but since you called on me, and we do, I just have to give a shout out. We have such amazingly talented and smart people in this town, many of whom are in the room and passionate. So in addition to the organizations that you're working with, I just wanted to shout out to Lisa's idea as well as to make sure that we are engaging those individuals in our community that may not be part of a different organization, but still have a lot of great ideas and energy to bring to the effort.
To that end, can we ask a question? In the past, we've had tech teams, we've had various working groups. Can you give us an overview of how that would, is that a part of this? It's probably in one of your graphs.
I think it's a mix of that and others. Yeah. So, and I think we're not trying to say exactly what it looks like yet until we get everybody together and start designing that process. We didn't want to go too far into this until we had the sense that we were good to go.
But that element will likely be included.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, Mirabai?
Was also giving a thumbs up.
Okay. So basically, we're getting thumbs up, Sam?
So I think generally speaking, these are more broad groups to look at. I mean, for carbon sequestration, you want to talk to the farmers, right? And for food localization and for different kinds of food issues, we want to talk to the local farming community. For understanding, like, emerging technologies, I think you want to talk to the local entrepreneurial community and broader, not just local, experts who know what's going on broadly. I'll use carbon sequestration as an example. I'm not quite sure what bucket it fits in, because if it's carbon farming, it fits in the ecosystem's focus area. But what if it's air capture, right? So there's various air capture technologies in development all over the world right now. And those are approaches which could be quite interesting. There's the biofuels, biochar, that whole bucket, and that fits in, I'm not sure where in here. And so I think there are a whole bunch of technologies that are going to be potentially applicable to the carbon sequestration, for example, because that's probably the most important one and least defined one, that you need to think about what buckets those fit in. And if they don't fit in a bucket, you need to define a bucket. And so the technology component of this and understanding it and being part of early adopters and taking chances, we need to figure out. And so that partnership has to be with both the entrepreneurial community, but also those organizations that tend to exist at universities who track that stuff, who understand, you know, kind of what's emerging and what's being viable and what's not being viable. And so we're talking about partnerships. I think we need to think about those kinds of partnerships. And that's not a specific organization, it's just classes of folks.
Yeah, one thing I just want to note is, I really appreciated Chris's comments, too. And I also want to suggest that we're not trying to set the city up as central to everything. And to be the convening committee that's going to manage this whole process, that's going to be impossible. And so what we want to do is try to figure out where we can best fit, where we have the most leverage and we can offer the most, and where we need to get out of the way, and where we need to call attention to other people that are doing things. So I don't think we're going to try to create the perfect constellation of balanced representation of all interests, because we're not going to be at the center of everything.
But hopefully, I will add, hopefully, we can make the appropriate connections and help those people get together to achieve something.
Right. And I would just underscore, the city has done some great work. I think of things like the Boulder Energy Challenge, where we convened bright minds to pitch ideas and pilot things, and we gave some seed money and that kind of thing. I think it creates ripples and others can take that on. And maybe the tech community can step up and help usher that. But those sorts of things. I also think about around the materials management, circular economy stuff, that getting the private sector jazzed to step up to the plate on some of that, I think it will be key. And I think you know, yes, the city doesn't need to do everything, but they can certainly help catalyze, I like that word. Okay. Anything else on four or five?
Just my comment about the EcoCycle block leader. That was fundamental, I think, in changing. We're not exactly where we'd like to be in waste diversion. But I can't stress how important it was to have people talking with each other. And what came with it also was the EcoCycle times. And in the EcoCycle times was, you know, different ways in which you could reduce or things like that. And I'm not thinking the city can or should be the center of all of this, but somehow there should be a bulletin board or something where maybe people could contribute to a climate plan times or something like that. So, I mean, you have these young people behind you. I mean, they seem to have a lot of energy and a lot of desire to want to help, and I think they can. And I totally believe in engaging people in their early adolescence to make them want to change the world. And we get them too late, it's too late. So I can't say enough thank you to this young group. And you may be young, but you're very mature, so.
So Lisa, I think, again, I really appreciate your comments. I also want to note, I think you might know about this, but we actually partnered and helped EcoCycle design the Backyard Carbon Farming Initiative that now has over 250 households that are actually engaging in real science. So I totally agree with you in that there are things that people can do, and it's really exciting to see people move out around that. And I also do want to apologize at this moment for not having started my presentation this evening by thanking those young people as well, because that's a part of the context change that we are seeing. Young people are stepping forward as one of the most important climate actors in this context, and I hope we can also engage them.
It's their world, it's not ours anymore, so.
On number six, we've talked a little bit about the legislative changes and analysis. I guess I want to echo what Mary said about keeping, you already said you're going to keep us updated on the rulemakings, but I think that's key, because if the rulemakings don't go well or if they're not implemented, we fail to achieve what could be an amazing step forward. I also think, well, it's relevant to the questions Mary asked about as we proceed with municipalization and what is the gap that remains? How real is that? What are the numbers behind it? The rulemakings will clarify those numbers. And so I think that's key fodder, key fodder, key input into this larger community conversation that we're going to have over the next year and a half about both this plan and also municipalization. So that will just be really important to monitor. Anything else on six?
I actually have something on three, but they're minor things. One thing I want to say, kind of colloquy to Lisa, is it's not just the residential, it's the business community. The business community is responsible for, and I'm part of that community, 70% of our emissions in the city that are based on electricity. And so it's something that we need to pay close attention to. And I look on page 29 of our packet, and I think I understand this, but I want to double check, under buildings, there's reduction in commercial and industrial electricity, and it's minus 2%. So that says to me that we're going the wrong way in our commercial and industrial emissions. And so I think we need to pay close attention to that, because it is the lion's share. And we need to engage business leaders and tie them into the community in the same way that Lisa, you're describing with EcoCycle. I just don't want to lose sight of that. That's the only kind of sector that is more or less flat and isn't declining at the moment. So I just wanted to flag that. And the last thing I want to point out, and I should have mentioned this earlier, around financial considerations, is para. Okay? We have a real hook into para, and it's what is the retirement funding for many of our employees. And so I think we need to be really active and make sure that para is investing in a way that is climate-friendly. So, thank you.
Just one real quick thing that just reminded me in reading through that leveraging paper, which was adding new information to inform people. And there was the example about how there was a suburban development that was built, and everything, all the houses were identical, except for some had their electricity meter in a highly visible place, and some of them had it in the basement. And as it turned out, the people that had it in a highly visible place used a lot less electricity. So, so a potential thing that we could do is, thinking about the commercial emissions, is put up somewhere in the city in a highly visible place, emissions, emissions levels right now. And, you know, I don't know, new information that is really visible and a daily reminder. Those things are amazing, how they can motivate people, so.
Okay. Emergence, let's go to number two, climate emergency resolution. This was a, Lisa brought this forward, it was a suggestion from the community. Did you have thoughts on that? And then does council have input?
So, sorry. So the thoughts, we did just put together a quick slide, just so there was clear understanding of what emergency declaration is. And I'll just read this top part and just give you some statistics about what's going on in the world. So as you may know, you have the opportunity to declare a climate emergency. It's really a resolution passed by a government body and puts the government on record in support of emergency action to reverse global warming. So we have, in fact, passed a number of similar resolutions in the past related to under two and other climate-related issues. So it's not that unusual that we would do something like this, particularly when you look at, there are 740 jurisdictions in 16 countries that have declared a climate emergency. I think the question would be whether council wants to look at any binding actions or non-binding actions. I do have a template that a lot of the communities have used as a guide. And let me just give you a map, too. I think it would not be terribly difficult, because most resolutions set up a process to develop an action plan, which turns out, we're kind of on that one. And then we would report back to council on a regular periodic basis in terms of our progress. So here's a bit of a map. You can see we're a little sparse in the middle part of the U.S. So Canada is really crushing it up there. So whether this influences any decision that you make, I just wanted to give you a sense of what's going on out there, and there are a number of cities that are doing this. And they vary, again, in terms of what they include in a resolution, whether it is just this template saying some words about climate change and we're going to do our part versus things that are really binding and very specific to the actions in our own jurisdiction. So what I would suggest is if this is something council is interested in doing, certainly you can give that direction to, or feedback to staff. We can prepare something and bring it back during a regular business meeting for your consideration.
It strikes me that, I mean, you're going to have, you could either do this at the beginning or the end, and it seems like there's going to be a launch event in September that may be in concert with that, that that would be timely if this council wanted to do something, since this plan will be finished in another council. What do people think of that?
Yeah, I would like that. And when this person, you know, sent us the email and then I communicated with them back and forth, and then he sent different attachments of what other communities, and it's just a resolution, so it's not like an ordinance and that we have to have one or two readings and a huge public hearing. It just is a statement, and I think it clearly states where this community is, and I don't think it would take a lot of time from our agenda.
And in an effort to populate the center of that, would it make sense to encourage all the communities in CC4CA to do similar things?
Mary, it's a great idea. We've talked about it and are having a conversation. We've talked about it and are having a conversation about whether that's a tactic that the various communities are, want to consider, so.
Does that sound right to people? Okay. All right, anything else that you wanted to hear from us on?
Thank you for all this work.
Yeah, thank you all and thank you for the great feedback.
And let us end this with another round of applause for our young singer.
Now, let's talk about consumption.
Let's talk about what?
Consumption, retail, let's buy and sell things. Can we talk about circular economy next?
Council members, please come back. Okay, we are going to move on to our next topic, which involves retail study.
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to be with you this evening. I'm Yvette Bowden, I'm the Director of Community Vitality, for purposes of this conversation. We're here to follow up on an earlier conversation and I'm going to turn it right over to Sarah Webenson, who's been the project lead for this important effort. Before I do, on behalf of the Community Vitality team and the project team, I just want to thank all of our colleagues across the city, several of whom are in the audience tonight from other departments, who were part of our internal team on this. We would also like to thank our many partners in the community, partner organizations like the Chamber, the Downtown Boulder Partnership, the Small Business Development Council, so many others that were helpful, EFA, in helping us do the outreach earlier. And we really also want to extend thanks to the many people who filled out survey instruments that gave us the ability to give you this comprehensive document this evening. Sarah?
Great. Thank you all for the opportunity to present the final report of the Citywide Retail Study, Citywide Retail Project Study Phase. In the interest of time, anyone interested in reviewing the entirety of the report may refer to the council agenda packet. And we also will post it to the city's project page tomorrow along with this presentation. Tonight, we will be focusing on the key findings and next steps towards crafting a citywide retail strategy. The strategy phase is intended to provide council with actionable recommendations by the end of the year. As a quick recap, the Citywide Retail Project arose out of two retail-related goals in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. These were to maintain affordable commercial space and also to promote a vibrant retail base overall. Almost a year ago, city council provided direction for the study requesting that it reinforce Boulder core values such as sustainability, environmental stewardship, creating a sense of place, and promoting Boulder as a welcoming, inclusive, and diverse community. It should be noted that these considerations are not typical of local retail studies, which puts Boulder at the forefront of integrating retail planning into broader nationwide efforts to look at issues of affordability and inclusivity. The Citywide Retail Study also builds on the findings of the more finite downtown retail vibrancy study that was completed in 2018. The final report provides information ranging from how Boulder's retail sector performs overall to how its performance compares to neighboring communities and peer communities nationwide, with the added exploration of what supports small businesses need to sustain themselves in Boulder. Tonight's presentation will focus on key findings from the study and how these might be addressed in the citywide retail strategy, which key findings included: Boulder's retail inventory and sales are strong and competitive; Boulder's sales tax revenues both benefit from and are reliant on spending by non-residents, for example, workers and visitors; sales tax revenues are relatively flat, signaling a need to be proactive and seek opportunities to better serve our shoppers, including a look at more inclusive goods and reducing retail deserts, and to be ready for changes in consumer behavior. We also found in the responses to the shopper survey that residents are calling for access to more affordable goods and retailers are calling for more city support and options for affordable space. The framework will consolidate the key findings from the report into two sets of objectives. The strategy will provide additional exploration for these findings for staff to provide actionable recommendations to council. The first set of objectives focus on the findings related to Boulder's retail inventory being sufficient but needing to address declining sales in certain areas, unmet needs in the community and opportunities to enhance our position in the face of growing competition. And I will go into more detail on each of these objectives in the following slides. Respondents to the shopper survey were asked for their levels of satisfaction with Boulder retail by price, selection, and availability. Satisfaction with price was the most notable, with all respondents indicating some level of dissatisfaction, which is shown in blue on the left there. This finding was greater among lower-income residents and reinforced by longer format comments provided in the report, with a few of them mentioned here as well, many of which included calls for goods that serve a broader diversity of customers and at more affordable prices. The study also looked at whether the location of existing Boulder retail was accessible to residents and workers. The map at left shows the location of residential density relative to the 10 primary concentrations of retail in the city. While the map at right shows the location specifically of grocery stores and pharmacies. These two types of retail uses are typically considered as important elements of a 15-minute neighborhood or a 3/4 mile radius from someone's home. Large printed maps with the locations of Boulder retail activity are available on boards in the room for anybody who would like a closer look. The study also found that a significant portion of Boulder's population resides outside these nodes. Looking at areas with the highest density population, there is only one that, the Vista Village neighborhood, east of Foothills and north of Valmont, that did not have walkable access to groceries. Similarly, looking at the location of pharmacies citywide, each node had a pharmacy other than the north Boulder Annex area or Nobo, which we'll go into later. As with resident access to groceries and pharmacy uses, it is expected that Boulder workers would have convenient access to dining out options. And in fact, cafes and fine dining were the two, only, the two only retail categories in which Boulder workers expressed a preference for spending in Boulder rather than elsewhere. The map at left shows areas with high concentrations of employment in Boulder and the map at right shows the locations of cafes, restaurants, and bars. The study found that all retail nodes in Boulder were well-served by dining options, but that three areas with high concentrations of employment fell outside those areas. These were the Boulder County office areas at Iris and Broadway, the northeast corner of the Boulder Industrial Area, north of Arapahoe, and the southwest area of Gunbarrel. The study also looked at Boulder's overall retail performance, both by retail industry category and by geographic area within the city. Large maps with the sales tax areas are also available in the room for anyone interested in looking, getting a closer look. These are the areas that are tracked by our finance department in their monthly revenue reports. The study found that two of the top-performing sales tax areas are experiencing gradual declines that are reinforced in the most recent year-to-date figures. First, food stores is among the, it's the third-highest grossing sales tax industry category. However, sales have dropped off considerably in the past year. And unfortunately, that red circle dropped a little bit when it converted to PDF, but that's where the food sales are going.
Sarah, if I could interrupt you real quick. I know you're going to do some benchmarking later on, but I don't think this is in your benchmarking. Do we have benchmarking or comparative information with respect to food stores in the region? In other words, are there grocery dollars going outside the region or are people just not buying groceries anymore?
Yeah, we can make a, there's probably a number of different.
Well, it almost seems like a direct correlation between grocery sale declines and out to eat. Dollars, people seem to be wanting to go out to eat instead of buying stuff at the grocery stores. But I'm just wondering if we were losing dollars to our neighboring communities, if you guys know.
We do not currently have that level of detail in our benchmarking, but we can make a note for the strategy.
And I just have a question. You have this north Broadway Annex and I know you're going to talk about it, but you're not including the hillside shops and that's kind of odd because that has multiple dining options, it has a significant grocery store, it has coffee shops off.
I think that's included in a different.
It has liquor store.
Yeah, this was specifically looking at pharmacy. So, as far as what the.
Yeah, but they have a pharmacy.
Oh, in that, okay, I'm sorry.
So, anyway, and I noted on your map and in your documentation, you don't include any of those, the hillside shops, and it's a significant shopping area.
I just have, Lisa, where's there a pharmacy that you're thinking about?
In Lucky's. Well, I don't know if you can go get prescriptions.
It's not a pharmacy.
But it has.
Has Arnic.
Yeah. Has Arnic. It has CBD, it has other things.
Right, so this is specifically looking at, could you pick up a prescription anywhere within that node? And I think what our consultant found was that you could.
No, you go to Pharmica down by Ideal.
Right, so this is all looking at that walkable distance of 3/4 of a mile. And so, when we were pulling out specific findings, we were trying to see where we weren't meeting that walkable, yeah.
That's great feedback and we can dig a little deeper.
Yeah, I mean, because a long time ago.
We'll come back to Nobo.
Okay. So, yes. So, first, food stores' sales have dropped off considerably in the past year. Second, sales tax revenues from the 29th Street area are not remaining flat or moderately increasing, as was the case with the other top three performing geographic areas, and was seeing a slight decline. It was worth noting the additional finding that sales tax growth rates are not keeping pace with inflation. In fact, the increase in sales tax over the past four years follows closely with the collection of out-of-state sales tax, largely impacted by the evolution of online sales tax remittances. It is not yet known how evolving regulations regarding online sales tax will impact consumer behavior, so it is recommended that the city continue to monitor this issue. We mentioned earlier that Boulder retail performs well compared to its neighboring communities. The chart at right shows that Boulder has a higher pull factor in a number of retail industry categories, which are circled in red. The pull factor indicates that Boulder sales in these areas exceed the spending of the potential of its own households. Interestingly, Boulder did not have a higher pull factor in two categories cited by Boulder shoppers as not meeting their needs, namely department stores and apparel. Those are shown in the orange squares below where Brumfield exceeds the pull factor of The finding also corresponds to retailer survey responses in which current retailers indicate that Boulder residents are critical to the success of their business, but the draw of Boulder to non-resident customers, such as Boulder workers and visitors from neighboring communities and elsewhere, was almost equally important to their survival. The study produced an interesting finding related to the impact of large-plate retail spaces. Boulder's position as already, as having the highest vacancy rate above its neighbors is in part because the current Macy's space in 29th Street is already listed as vacant in the CoStar real estate database. If the Macy's space remains filled, Boulder's vacancy rate drops to 3.9%, which is more in line with its neighbors, other than Louisville, which also currently has several large-plate vacancies. Boulder's.
Macy's changed to housing, how would that affect it?
The retail vacancy would be eliminated.
It would be lower.
Right, so this is our inventory of retail space and the vacancy rate for just those spaces.
If it converted to any other space other than retail, it would have a similar effect. We do want to point out that this is just a study and it happens to point this out because it's currently listed. This is not something that's definite or imminent. It's a point in time.
Correct. And so, it's really just an indication, if you look at the Louisville rates being so much higher, of the impact of these large spaces. And so, if that space remains occupied, our absorption rate also goes down to about zero, which is, means that our current retail supply is meeting current demand. When looking at Boulder's retail performance relative to peer communities nationwide, these were communities with high university-related populations and other characteristics similar to Boulder. It was notable that four out of the five of these communities had no new retail construction starts planned. The strategy offers an opportunity to look at how Boulder can better utilize its existing retail space to meet the needs of its residents and workers and to remain competitive regionally. The map at right shows the location of existing vacancies. The strategy could include looking at where new types of food stores could be located, what types of retail could boost sales in the 29th Street area, and where additional retail could be located to address retail deserts and possibly provide affordable commercial opportunities for smaller businesses.
Sarah, can I ask you a question there?
Yeah.
Because in there and in.
Because in there and in a few other places in our packet, it talks about looking for opportunities for certain kinds of retail. But what latitude do we have as a government to set that, right? I mean, we can optimize for more retail space in general, but how would we try to get a food store in a particular area or any other kind of retail, specific retail use?
If it was an interest that came out in the strategy and the subsequent work or as directed by council, there are communities that develop pull programs to actually pitch and market their locations to certain types of businesses they're trying to attract. This would be part of a larger conversation on, that we feel we need a little bit more digging in particular neighborhoods, and I think ties intensively to the walkability question of what's happening in particular neighborhoods as they evolve. So we think we need to do a little bit more homework on that. There are some cities that have particular programs to pull in certain types of community-serving things, and they typically do that as they're evolving neighborhoods, to say, we want to make sure that this is going to be walkable and has these kinds of things in it. And then they'll have a group like ours in Community Vitality be working with those types of businesses to see if there's interest in a formation.
So that's like a marketing kind of a thing.
Can, yes.
But we wouldn't really have regulatory tools, would we? It'd be more of a encouraging and marketing kind of.
Most of the time, they are a combination of marketing and particular types of incentive programs that you could consider, and they really differ. They're across the board, depending on the type of community you have.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. You know what? How close are you to being done?
Four slides.
Okay, can we just hang on, because this, obviously, we're going to generate a lot of discussion. Okay, we will come back. Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Thank you. Better go while the getting's good.
Yeah. So, okay. In terms of, oh, maybe I am further on. Promoting small business sustainability is a key driver of the citywide retail project. The findings of the retail study suggest that this could be approached in two ways. First, in directly responding to the challenges cited by existing retailers and retailers that have closed within the past two years. And second, by continuing to build on city efforts to maintain affordable commercial in ways that dovetail with the findings of the study. The study found that retailers generally are very happy to be located in Boulder. As was mentioned earlier, they appreciate its natural beauty, a well-educated and affluent customer base, and the mix of customer types. It was noted in the survey responses, however, that a majority of retailers feel that it is becoming more difficult to do business in Boulder. The retailer survey and exit interviews with recently-closed retailers provided some insight on how the city could help reverse this impression. Some of the challenges cited may be a perception that are not, that it is not actually, it may be a perception, well, it is not actually worse in Boulder than in neighboring communities, such as taxes and rents. The suggested framework for the strategy would include a look, however, at how the city can support employee retention through access improvements and existing efforts to provide workforce housing. It could also look at supplemental parking and access improvements, help with navigating city processes, and opportunities to create more affordable commercial space. We will go into more detail on these last two items in the following slides. In terms of navigating city processes and the cost of doing business in Boulder, it was mentioned that average Boulder rents are in line with our neighbors as our sales tax rates, and the higher Boulder sales tax amounts to an additional five cents on a $10 purchase. The consultant looked at possible, other possible cost factors, such as permitting fees and other requirements. The strategy would include partnering with our colleagues and other city departments to explore whether there are opportunities to streamline Boulder's permitting process and fee structures to improve the retailer customer experience. The final way in which retailers said that Boulder could help them to sustain their business was to provide more opportunities for affordable space. This was one of the comprehensive plan goals that helped drive the retail study, and efforts are already underway to pilot affordable commercial programs, such as the spaces being created at 30th and Pearl, as well as conversations about affordable commercial being a possible community benefit. The city has discussed looking at district-owned spaces in the downtown area as a possible approach to providing affordable space and to reconfiguring or sharing existing spaces, possibly with incentives, to create opportunities for smaller or shared retail concepts. The strategy would look at these and other best practices nationwide to determine if there are additional ways to provide affordability. The next steps would include updating the framework based on council's feedback this evening. Depending on the priority objectives, staff will convene an interdepartmental team to evaluate the resources needed to complete the strategy. As with the study phase, the strategy would include a rigorous community engagement plan, bringing in the expertise of our nonprofit Economic Vitality partners, as well as retailers, community organizations, and members of the public. As part of the survey responses, we had over 300 members of the public offer to participate in follow-up focus groups. Lastly, the intention is to provide council with actionable recommendations by the end of the year. The questions we're asking council are whether you wish to add or remove any of the objectives from the strategy, if there are any priority objectives that you want the strategy to focus on, and lastly, if council agrees with the proposed set of next steps.
Do you?
Yep. And at the end, thank you for this opportunity. We also summarized the objectives again in these last slides.
Okay, so there's stuff we want to talk about, and we also want to give feedback on objectives. So there is some hands up. All right, Bob and then Lisa.
Two things to add. I'm not too sure where they exactly fit in, so I'll just say them. Going back to Aaron's comment, question, I guess, about how do we, how do we help those retail deserts that we have in our town? I think there's actually three parts of it. You touched a little bit on incentives, but I think regulatory is a big part of it. And as we work on our use tables, this is an opportunity for us to look at what our use tables say about what's permitted, and if we have, if we don't permit retail in certain places, this is a wonderful opportunity for us to remove those regulatory barriers. But the third, and this is the toughest one, over incentives and regulatory, is that some places, it's just plain old infrastructure. I can tell you that I can walk one mile any direction from my house and not be able to spend money at all. Groceries, drugs, liquor. It's a big one. It's, it's, there are literally neighborhoods in the near-north side.
Shops.
Huh? No, that's more than a mile away. There's, there are neighborhoods in the near-north side and then south, well, you saw the desert there. And it's not just a matter of the zoning doesn't work, or people don't think there's enough folks there to have the incentive to open a shop. There's physically no place to open a shop. And so I think we need to be looking at corners. I'm a big fan of bodegas, you know, where you can, where on every corner or every major intersection, there's an opportunity to, to spend money. And I think, so for example, using North Boulder, Broadway and Iris, if that ever comes into our control, that would be a wonderful place for us to eliminate a commercial desert in that part of town. And I think there's other commercial deserts where I think we need to be looking at actually physically changing uses from what they are right now. And it's more than just incentives, it's more than just regulatory, it's actual infrastructure.
Wait, hey, can we just pause there for a second?
Yep.
So the Chris Meshchucks of the world, I mean, you're sharing this information with them as part of the use table discussion, I presume?
Yes, and we've had a member of the planning department, Jim Robertson, has been involved in this project from the, from the beginning. So yes, as well as we're participating in several of the ongoing planning projects, including the East Boulder Plan and several of the other efforts. Thank you.
So that's a nice segue into my second point, which is, you mentioned, you know, it's interesting and surprising that our, our rental rates are relatively comparable to peer, to, to, to peer things. And so while I'm all in favor of experimenting with affordable commercial, and I know we're going to start that at 30th and Pearl, that doesn't seem to be a genuine barrier to, to reach diversity of retail, nor do our sales tax, whether on the little or the high side, we're not off the scale. I think you hit the nail on the head, but, but only, only part of the nail. It's not just the fees that we impose to get people started up, it's the regulatory burdens. I don't think there's a week that's gone by, in my three-and-a-half years on council, that I haven't had somebody call me up and say, you know how hard it is to start a business in Boulder? And it's not just the check they gotta write, it's all the hoops they've got to go through. And the fact that they've got to go from department to department to department, and they don't talk to each other. That I have to fill out the same form with five different people, and, and I don't know why you all can't, aren't you guys one city? And the answer is no, we're a bunch of departments. And I think that's the number-one streamlining that we need to be doing. Set aside the fees, because folks can bake that into their, their pricing. But if we make it really, really hard for people to start a business here, they're going to go someplace else, and that's exactly what's happening.
That's a great segue. Because I would echo that, that sentiment. And this week, I've heard from probably six different people who have, you know, filled me, it sounds like I'm talking to the same person, but I know I'm talking to different people. And just how hard it is, not only for businesses, but for any kind of permitting, whether it's a residential, whether you're just fixing your house or whatever. And I can't say loud enough, we somehow have to collapse that, so it's not such a burdensome process. It shouldn't be so hard. And people waiting three, four weeks, and then somebody goes on vacation and doesn't turn it over to somebody else, that really needs to get fixed. I will, I wanted to kind of follow up on Aaron's question, where he was saying, is there any way we can incent certain types of retail? And one of the big holes that I know Bob is interested, and I think a lot of us are interested in, is the Diagonal Plaza and what might happen there. And I know there's tons of complications there with multiple ownerships, but we should really figure that out. And because that could have a lot of benefit for the communities on either side of 28th or 30th, and could be a really central place, and could also be retail and other things. And it's lost a lot of its former retail. So things like, is it Gart Brothers or Dick's or something, big retail was there? And then Albertsons and all of those.
Sports Authority and Walmart.
Yeah, Sports Authority, those things.
And Albertsons.
I already mentioned Hillside Shops, so that should be in your list. And then, I think, oh, and the whole thing about non-resident shoppers and some who shop and some who don't. I was thinking about, again, my, my own personal experience, where most of my career, I didn't work in the city of Boulder. In fact, I commuted. And I never shopped in the, the community that I worked in. And I found that a really odd thing, that you're depending on people who don't live here to shop here. And I guess my experience was, I'm at work, I need to work, and I need to get home as fast as possible. So shopping was never part of that equation, and shopping would be left to a non-workday. And I'm, so I don't know, I really am kind of amazed that, that one of your key findings was how dependent we are on non-resident shoppers, and it really didn't make a lot of sense to me.
So not all shoppers are the same. I appreciate the inquiry, and we do need to dig a little deeper. The fact is that as a per capita amount of spend, the revenue generated, we are reliant upon it. One thing to consider that we'll need to continue to look at in the future as well is, as we, as a community, continue to age and/or have young students, and both of those groups have fixed incomes or less disposable income, let's say, we'll need to pay even greater attention on our reliance over time. The retail industry is clearly shifting. This was acknowledged by the consultant that helped us, and frankly, in the space, and I think profoundly from the people that filled out the survey across all categories, and from the retailers. And so while it may be surprising, it is nonetheless a fact of the sales tax.
And I was curious, and I didn't see it distinguished so much, but on the non-resident shoppers, how many of those are non-resident workers versus people who are coming to Boulder for the Boulder experience to go shopping? You know, as tourists or as people coming up for the day from Denver or something?
There's some detail on that, which is in the retailer response, that they break down their, their critical customers. And so they break that down by people coming in from nearby areas versus workers.
Through zip codes or?
There, we did, there is a capability in the raw survey data to distinguish between a visitor versus somebody who is a commuter worker, and the behaviors are different. So in a place where you have high workforce density, that might be daytime purchases of lunch if it's nearby, or even an immediate after work, whereas your visitor is really concentrating on the core in your downtown and on 29th Street. So it is a different type of sales behavior, something we intend to look at, and none of which should be looked at as the only thing that we want to rely on, because in this area, diversification is key. I think one of the things that we just really want to keep an eye on with all of our partners are what is keeping our businesses afloat and all of these people employed, as well as how to also serve the needs of residents who are purchasing groceries here and going to the pharmacy and things like that.
Can I ask a follow-up question? One time, long, long time ago, Bob Ikem told me that, back of the envelope, if I understood him correctly, that he estimated that somewhere between 40% and 50% of our sales tax was paid by people who don't live here. And that was a whole spectrum. It could be the commuter that just bought a cup of coffee or lunch, it could be the person who comes up from Denver or Arvada to walk Pearl Street Mall on a Sunday afternoon, or it could be, you know, a visitor who's been three or four nights here from out of town. Do you guys have any idea whether that 40% to 50% is directionally accurate? And if you don't know now, is that something you could capture?
I would say that, that's where that term, the pull factor, comes in.
But I've been cracking across all retail.
Right, so there's the overall pull factor of 1.5, which would indicate that we exceed what our own residents can purchase by a factor of 50%.
Okay, so that would make, that would make a third, then, if I'm doing the math right? Is that, is that my math right there?
We're between 30 and 40%.
Between 30 and 40% of all sales taxed by people who don't live here. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question on that.
Sure. Then you.
I'm, I'm wondering if there are any, if there are any times where that shift becomes apparent, because that did not used to be the case, and just what it, what it would have been in terms of trending that would have caused that.
I'm not sure we.
If Bob has made that statement to Bob, just where he's sort of pulling that from, so to speak.
To be fair to Bob, I think it was relatively scientific. This is probably a little bit more scientific, but it sounds like it was, he was directionally correct.
And we could include a look at historic trends, and if it's available.
And that would be part of that.
Yeah, how far in agreement with finance.
And, and the reason I say that is because in some of the desirable places to shop, the places that are now long gone, also, they, well, they were just all local, right? And people did, there was more diversity in the shopping ability, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Aaron, then Sam.
Well, I'll, I'll start by echoing some of my colleagues' things. And Bob, what, what you said about the, the difficulty of getting permits, I think is spot-on. I've certainly heard that many times as well, from the people who are really challenged to navigate the system. And so that's just, that stood out to me as, as something that if we could, I don't know if we have a, someone who's an ombudsman or, or somebody in each department that's tasked with knowing who to coordinate with in other departments, but it seems like a kind of a low-hanging fruit, particularly for the smaller businesses, right? I mean, you assume that somebody like a Macy's is going to have the staff, people, to figure it all out without too much trouble. But if you're just trying to start a 1,500-square-foot clothing store or something, it's probably going to be very tough to figure that stuff out. So I'd, I'd love to see us figure out ways that we can make that process easier for people. And, and maybe for smaller businesses, we could look at, you know, a different path. You know, maybe if you're under a certain threshold, you get the quick and easy path, you know? If you're over a certain threshold, you have to do the full thing. Or maybe you can waive a couple fees for businesses under a certain size or something like that. I mean, we're talking about trying to encourage businesses that sell more affordable goods, which I think is an important goal. And so one way to make that more doable is to offer services to them, or maybe to make it less expensive. I don't know how you'd quantify that, but we, we're working on an affordable commercial space program, which would be about the rents that we're charging. which would be about the rents that we're charged, but helping out with the fees might be another way to look at something like that. And when I was reading through the free-form comments on the surveys, the interest in more affordable goods came through over and over and over again. And I feel like maybe some of the gaps there are in kind of mid-sized stores. You know, like you think about like Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, for example, that we do have here in town. But there are a number of, like, there's no sporting goods store of a certain size, right? And so we have a few of those spaces in town, like Diagonal Plaza has some empty ones. But I know you talk about optimizing existing retail spaces. That seems like one of those opportunities. You know, if we could maybe attract a handful of stores that sold goods that were a little bit more affordable in broad categories by helping people to reconfigure spaces, it seems like that could be handy. I'll also echo what Bob was saying about where retail is located. The idea of the corner shop, which our zoning doesn't allow in most places. You think about the, what's now the Alpine Cafe, used to be Delilah's, you know, store up on the hill, which is just this super-functional thing in the middle of a neighborhood and you can't do in almost any part of the city. So that's one of those things to look at. I'd agree, like Broadway and Iris would be a great place to have a mixed-use node eventually, if we can get there. But tying into the use table discussion, one of your desert areas was food for people who work in the business parks. And so I'll put in another plug. I've plugged a couple of times in our current use table project to allow for small restaurants in those industrial areas. I'll use this opportunity to put in another plug. And some planning staff has pushed back on that a little bit. But it seems like these recommendations point us in that very direction. So I think that would be handy. And another thing, you noted that rents are roughly comparable for retail spaces here and in peer communities around the county, which I see as the case. But the analysis punted on the property tax question. And what I've heard from some business owners, small business owners in particular, is that the triple net, the insurance, common area maintenance and tax fees, can actually get so high that they're comparable to the rent amounts. So I feel like those triple net fees are a huge part of what's making it tough to afford commercial space here in Boulder. So I'd really like to see an effort to capture some of those numbers. Like, I get that there are special taxing districts in a lot of different places, but you could normalize for that a little bit. You know, you could pick out a few representative properties in Boulder and a few representative properties in Longmont, Lafayette, Broomfield. And if, you know, they happen to be in some special taxing district, you could just, you know, level that out. So I'd like to learn more about that. Because we are, we're dealing with taxing questions on a regular basis here in Boulder. And having a good sense of how those compare to neighboring communities would be helpful. So that'd be my one ask as part of that. But I feel like in general, you're absolutely on the right track, and we've got a lot of good stuff going here. And so I look forward to seeing the final strategy and implementing some of this stuff. Occasionally, plans get finished and then not necessarily implemented a whole lot. Hopefully, this is one that we will keep working on. Thank you.
Sam, then Mary, then Mirabai, then Cindy.
Besides that, this is a very good memo. Thank you, guys. You will not hear many of us asking for much more data because there was tons of data packed in here. So that means it's a good memo. You anticipated the questions that you would get. I want to say, at the highest level, it basically says that retail's pretty healthy in Boulder. You know, we have a high pull factor, which means that we're getting sales taxes from folks who are spending money here, who don't live here. And, you know, there's a relatively high satisfaction level, even from the retailers, which I thought was good. And I also think that when you break apart the out-of-town folks into commuter workers and tourists or visitors, that those two obviously have different needs, and that the needs of the workers aren't rocket science. I mean, I work out at Flatiron's Park. There's 40,000 people who work out there, most of whom in commute, maybe two-thirds. And the needs out there, what Erin said, there need to be restaurants, convenience stores, and, you know, things that workers will use. Workers are not going shopping, like Lisa said, for clothes or shoes or sporting goods. That's something they do in the weekends wherever they live. And so when we think about the needs of workers, we should really just concentrate on the service needs. And I think the way I would look at, I think one of the reasons staff hesitates to do either housing or services in industrial parks is because of the concentration you would get and the conflict of uses, right? Some of the industrial areas have, you know, stinky uses like coffee roasting. You know, it's great, we all like coffee, but it can be not where you'd want to eat lunch necessarily. So I think a concentration limit might be a way to approach that. So that you do allow that as a use, particularly restaurants that would serve workers. Because also in Flatiron Business Park, there's not a lot of places to eat. There's the upslope and the Ozos, which is there, which are always well-occupied. And then if you go over to Conestoga and you go look at where Snarfs is, that's packed, you know?
Picas.
Picas, great, great food. But it's very full and very congested. And then you look across the way and you think there's got to be opportunity in Community Plaza there to redevelop in some way, much like Diagonal, but to develop in some way that serves that whole area, which has a lot of workers. And it's not going to probably be a big tourist draw. So you can look at that location as kind of potentially a very good service location for the employment centers out there. So that was one of my thoughts, because your strategy topic area on page 52 talked about, you know, optimizing for what the employment centers need. I think that's pretty obvious what they need. And then the one other thing that I thought I would bring up is thank you for the Spanish-language shopping responses. I hadn't seen that, Mary, when I was talking to you earlier this afternoon. I hadn't quite gotten to that. But as far as wanting to be a welcoming community, I think that's one of the things that we lack, is what folks who are telling us in Spanish that they need. And that's, you know, both more shopping areas that serve the kinds of food that they like to make, as well as lower-cost retail. And so I don't know what to say about that, except that it's a clear request from a community that we want to be welcoming to. And what I would want to focus on is a lot of that. You know, I think a lot of the retail businesses here have it dialed in pretty well. They're doing fairly well. And I think this is one segment, you know, we have geographic deserts. And I think this is a type of retail service desert. So, but thanks and good work.
Mary? We've got a long line.
So thanks, Sam, for that, because that was something I was going to bring up. I really appreciated those comments. And I think it's important to note that a lot of the folks that are, because I hear this all the time. It's, I'm going, I'm driving 45 minutes to go to North Longmont to the Walmart. And these are folks that are working two, three jobs, that have less time, that are having to drive to find some of the things that they need. So I guess what we need to do is, again, put the equity lens on this and focus on those things that will serve people with lesser means. You know, we talk a lot about restaurants and coffee shops, but that's not what some of these folks are looking for. They're actually looking for practical stuff like tortillas, you know? I mean, so it's, it's, it's an important thing to keep, keep our eyes on and figure out how we can perhaps work with the existing two markets. There's two fruit that he has. There's one in North Boulder, in Erin's neighborhood. And there's another one right at 30th and Belmont. And to work with those folks and perhaps find out from them what it is they need. Because oftentimes, they are sparsely stocked. So, so find out more from them.
I could colloquiate, you know, if there's, we've been talking about affordable businesses and things like that. So if there's an opportunity for somebody to start a small store, a small retail space, and they don't have the wherewithal totally to do that. And we do have the Small Business Group. And I know they do a pretty good, they do a great job. But I would like to see how we can, a lot of times, people aren't even aware of it. So how do we put people who might need something like that, would like to do something for their community in terms of retail or materials, yet don't have a path forward on how to do that? So I think that would be really cool to do that. I was, oh.
Well, I would, you know, I was just going to add too that maybe one of the paths forward is to revisit the food truck ordinance and allow food carts. I know that we talked about food carts and never went back and revisited that. That was left off the food truck ordinance. So.
You mean non-motorized ones?
The, yeah, the push carts.
Yeah.
Push carts was the item that was left off that ordinance for later revisiting, and I don't think we ever have. So those are alternatives to having a brick-and-mortar. I know that brick-and-mortar folks feel competition from that, but especially in some of these retail deserts.
And I was.
Mirabai. We got a line, Mirabai.
If I could just finish, I was just going to say something about Sam and Erin's comment.
I'm going to put you in the line, in the queue.
On, are you going to?
You were colloquiating on tortillas.
Right, and I was, right.
As long as you're still on the same topic, otherwise.
No, I like tortillas. I was just going to say, I was just going to say that the thing about these deserts, these industrial deserts and having smaller retail, like restaurants and services, is so people don't have to drive so much. And we're trying, we just had the climate plan, and we're talking about the retail plan. And so we should try to figure out how to reduce the amount of transportation needed.
Okay, so I'm going to go a little bit more on the small business side. And being a, from a small business myself, I will say that it is the administrative work that drowns you. And we've been dealing with that with this unfortunate new tax that our legislature put through, that we now have to charge tax from every other state or county, city. It's insane. Something like that will destroy a business, and it's killing us. So if you're starting a small business and have very little human power to do so, and you're having to jump from city to city department, it's going to kill you. And so I'm wondering if you guys can, if you've thought about pairing with either like the Chamber or the Small Business Association, where maybe they can have liaisons to departments within our staff, staff members that are part of the departments, and they can all work together and have like a point person that a small business owner can go work with the Small Business Association, and they can help walk them through. Because I think a lot of that is volunteers that do that. And so maybe that would be a way where they could get some guidance. And maybe, I don't know, if, you know, Chamber, if you pay your dues and stuff, could also have a point person there to help them walk through these. Because again, a lot of people might have a specialty in a small business, but administrative or technology may not be that. And so some guidance from people could really help. Because I think, having been here my entire life, watching our small businesses go away and be replaced by chains has just been incredibly sad. I think it's been one of the biggest contributing factors to losing the amazing feel that this town once had. And I think if we could really promote bringing in some really unique quote-unquote "mom and pop" shops again, I would love to see that. And there's so many innovative people. You can just go onto Etsy and see the innovation that exists there. And so if you could help support those people to bring that to a brick-and-mortar, you'd be serving your constituents here rather than online and having the taxes go online. So I'd love to see that. And then if we're going to jump back over, I mean, we'll pull the small business side and the innovation of, I had a friend from high school who started a food truck, and she was really successful with it. And another friend of mine, who was a graphic designer, designed it. And so if we could figure out our regulations to bringing it into some of the deserts, especially the park over on Arapaho. I mean, again, yeah, we're talking about the cars in these 15-minute walkable neighborhoods. Well, the same thing applies to lunch hour, and lunch hour in Boulder sucks. I mean, let's just be honest. I don't go out, I try to stay as far away from it. I mean, you know, so if people are having things that are brought right to their really close or walkable, within a block to their workplaces, you're going to decrease your carbon emissions, you're going to decrease the traffic, you're going to decrease the frustration, you're going to increase, you know, the experience that we have in Boulder, hopefully, and support small culinary efforts. So even almost like the co-ops that we're starting to see pop up, if we can do things like that. So I would love to see some of that start going in our business sectors. So that's my pitch for small business.
Cindy.
I also agree with what everyone said about the permitting process.
Cindy, your mic.
Sorry, talking to my paper here. I agree with what everyone said about the permitting process. I, and this has been, this is decades old, specifically with planning. And so whatever part business needs to have to go through in that. And I was thinking, maybe we could get someone like Chris Hoffman, who just, who contributed, I think, to the climate discussion, who does organizational development, is that correct? We just put his, set him loose in the planning department and see if that can't be of some help. Because there has got to be some reason why this has been so difficult decade after decade after decade. And I'm not exaggerating with that. And it really is daunting. And it's just, it's, it's another method of torture in this community. It really is. And I empathize with what Mirabai is saying.
Yeah.
This is, so at any rate, that's one of the top things. And it's not business necessarily, it's not retail study, but it's the process people have to go through in order to be able to do whatever in the community. One of the, the saturation levels in the industrial, I think Sam had just mentioned that, or Erin had, about having just a limit if we're going to have food places. So that, as we're doing with the ADUs, that there is some limitation placed. And one of the questions I have, and I wonder if you did any sort of research on it, is how many people do work to these so-called 15-minute neighbor, walk to these 15-minute neighborhoods, places? Because a lot of them have parking. And I know the place, Lisa's place, it's called the Hill Center.
Hillside Shops?
Hillside Shops. The parking lot there is just jammed, most of the time.
It's very busy, all the time.
So, and people do stop when they're going back and forth from one end to the other. But part of the, part of that would be is how many people in the neighborhood actually access that without an automobile?
Yep.
If that could be measured, it would be helpful, I think. Because this may be just a name that we're giving that doesn't really apply. And basically, that's it. I think the numbers, the information you gave us was just pretty outstanding, so much of it. Yeah. Good reading for a long time.
Thanks, Suzanne. So thank you, Cindy, and all of the council members that have mentioned concerns with permitting in the Planning and Development Services area. So what I, what I want you to know is that we are well aware of this issue. And let me just remind you that when we had the first adjustment to base in May, the council was good enough to allow us to hire some fixed-term positions. And we're going to be recommending some others that will extend so that by the end of 2020, we are reevaluating all of our processes in the Planning and Development Services Department. And under interim Planning Director Chris Messchuk and interim Public Works Director Mary Ann Wedeman, we hope to make significant progress in this area. We know that it's an issue. We're trying really hard to make progress and make it be lasting progress. Because when Cindy said this has been going on for decades, I think you're 100% right. And we do try to make changes and tweaks, and things get better. And then they don't always stay better. So we're really, really trying on this. This is not something that can change overnight. And that's why I'm telling you that we're targeting the end of 2020 to, by then, have made significant progress on improvements.
Jane, I, may I make just one suggestion, just right with that, is to be sure and include you. users in the process, to people who've been through the process and where they get hung up, so that they can actually give some real feedback, and the planning department knows where that is.
Okay, I'm in the queue. I'm going to speak.
Can you talk about that here? I want to follow up with just that.
Oh, okay, both end by all, thanks, go ahead.
And now, just real quickly, I'll just, thanks for that, Cindy, I agree. I'll just note that, you know, a few years ago, David Driscoll had a group that was working on process improvements at the planning department, and actually came under some pretty harsh criticism from members of council, because it was perceived as working with users, but who were also developers, or people building things. So I would ask us to be receptive, because council has not always been receptive to similar efforts in the past.
Thank you, Erin, I really appreciate that.
Just a question for Jane. Jane, you mentioned planning, but I assume that when we're using planning as a shorthand to mean all permitting, tax applications, anything that a small business has to do to get started in this town? Or is it limited just to planning?
Well, the work that Mary Ann and Chris are doing are in Planning and Development Services. At the same time, the folks in the Finance Department are working on improving our sales tax process through a new system that we've purchased, and we're trying to put things online, that sort of thing. But that, again, is going to be, I hope, finalized in 2020.
Yeah, and I would hope that if there's two initiatives there, I would hope those initiatives are coordinated so that, because it's all about ease of use, as Cindy mentioned.
Right, right, it's all about ease of use.
Yeah.
And hey, maybe it could be in a hub, say, where people came to one place to get their city services.
Yeah, like at the Pavilion.
Yeah.
As an example.
As an example.
How much is it going to cost?
Do I get to speak yet, or no?
I'm just going to hop in on this real quick. Think one-stop shopping, right? So people go to a website, start your business, and here's what you have to do. Or they go to a website, building permit, here's what you have to do. Because I know we've talked about this for social services, right? Trying to have one spot where people can figure out all the different forms that they need to fill out. So, anyway, that's just a thought.
Yeah. I will say, in 1986, it was great, the planning was, and permitting, and I walked right through, even though it was a unique building.
And we had a lot fewer regulations then, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, we are the, we've met the enemy, and it is us, since we make all these bells and whistles people have to jump through. The only thing I want to add is, I think you guys have said it all very well, and I will not repeat it. The only thing I would say is, I do, we mentioned food trucks in passing, but I guess, in Portland, Oregon, they devote chunks of parking lots to food truck parks, and I, and they don't have to be as permanent as they are there, but I just, I think, when I think about food, the lunch, the worker lunch issue, I think, for gosh sakes, if we could allow food truck parks in the parts of town where there aren't restaurants, that would be an elegant, it doesn't have to be a permanent solution, but it could be an ongoing solution, that we.
Our rules are very restrictive with regard to food trucks.
Right, okay, so that's what I'm saying, is it's time for us to change that. One, look at Rayback and how well that works. And we could do it in a much smaller scale, for the lunchtime crowd, but I just, I think, we don't have to make this as difficult as we make it, especially in some of these places where we both work.
Well, Mary's comment on the push carts, I think was great.
Well, there's that, too, but whether it's a car or a truck.
I mean, when I lived in Honolulu, every Saturday, they used to have swap meets, and the parking lots would turn into food trucks, carts, just all kinds, people would bring all kinds of stuff there, and it was quite a festival.
It could be like a farmer's market for food trucks.
Yeah, but, you know, yes.
So, yes, I agree that that ordinance needs to be revisited, as well as amending it with the push cart.
Correct, I think, especially in areas of town where existing businesses don't need to be threatened. Okay, so I guess, in general, what you're hearing from us on your questions about objectives is you're headed in the right direction, and there's some things that I think council underscored is, they're particularly interested in addressing. And it's fun to watch the pendulum swing, and issues to come around again, but streamlining is certainly one of them. I don't know, final words?
Well, I just wanted to add, put in another plug for the food truck, food pod, and push cart thing. Like, you actually get some of that bodega feel, there are people who sometimes sell things on the street, like not too far from my neighborhood, which I know is illegal, but it's a great, fun thing when it happens.
So it happens, you know, it happens, so we might as well.
Right, if we can enable a little bit of that.
And, no, but it addresses both ends, business opportunities and fills a need, so.
It does, right? And who can beat mango on a stick with some lime juice, right? It's some great, great stuff. But, so I'll just say, thank you so much. This is an amazing packet, amazing memo, and amazing work, and thank you so much. And wanted to give a shout-out as well to Sharon King, head of the Small Business Development Center, who's done incredible work here as well. I noticed that she, like, went out and found the people for the exit interviews. It took a lot of work, so.
We really are thankful to all of the businesses, those that are still in business in Boulder, and those that are not, for giving us that time and feedback.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, we are adjourned.